Good morning, everyone.
Virtual gavel.
We have a virtual gavel this morning because we don't have the gavel. I don't... Is it around here, Kathy?
Here.
All right. See if we can find it. If not, we'll do without. We're going to call a meeting of the Board of Supervisors and the Redevelopment Authority to Order today is Thursday, March 15, 2018. It is just after 8:30 a.m. We're in the community center at the Sierra Room at 8:51 East Williams Street. We're also streaming on the Internet. Can we have a roll call for the record, please, Sue? Thank you.
Good morning. Supervisor Bound.
Here.
Supervisor Bonkowski.
Here.
Supervisor Bagwell.
Here.
Supervisor Barrett.
Here.
Mayor Crowe.
Here.
Have a warm.
Thank you very much. Can we call on our good friend, The Rockin' Rev, to get us started this morning?
Thank you for the many blessings that we receive from your hand. The late winter snow. We look outside and see the beautiful dark blue Nevada skies and the white covered mountains. And we're so thankful that we live in this area and in this wonderful community where friendships run deep and we're grateful we can be a part of this community. I pray that you'd be with our mayor and our supervisors today, guide and direct them, and they would make good decisions on behalf of all who live in this great city of Carson City. I pray in Jesus's name.
Thank you, Ken, very much. Thank you.
John, you want to leave us in the question?
Yeah. Please join in the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We're now going to move on to item number five, public comment. And I know there's some folks for Victims Crime Week. Who's here with that? Anybody? Marcy's Law? Good morning. I think we'll do it during public comment. You want to talk to us a little bit about what the National Crime Victims Week is? Go ahead.
Thank you for having me. My name is Brady Griffiths. I'm the Field Outreach Director with Marcy's Law for Nevada. After passing two consecutive legislative sessions fighting for equal rights for victims of crime, we are now question number one on the ballot. We are excited to be here to accept a proclamation on behalf of the Board. But by next meeting, I would encourage the Board to look into Marcy's Law, and we'd like to get on the agenda next meeting for a vote for the full endorsement of the Board.
Let's hear about that one.
Okay.
Sometimes we'll talk to you about those things.
Okay. That sounds great.
This is a proclamation for you, however. Says, "Whereas Carson City, Nevada, joins with local law enforcement, local and state victims advocacy groups, assistance organizations, and efforts including Marcy's Law for Nevada and the Office of Victims of Crime of the United States Department of Justice to call for support for victims of crime. And whereas more than 95,000 instances of violent crimes or property crimes were reported by law enforcement in the recent year pursuant to the Nevada Uniform Crime Report of 2016. And whereas in Nevada, a violent crime occurred every 26 minutes and 32 seconds." That's 26 minutes and 32 seconds. "A property crime occurred every four minutes and 38 seconds during the recent year according to the Uniform Crime Report of 2016. And whereas Crime Victims Rights Week serves to recognize the needs of crime victims and the importance of securing their voice and rights, which Marcy's Law for Nevada serves to accomplish. And whereas this sentiment is embodied in this year's national theme, 'Expand the circle, reach all victims.'" Expand the circle, reach all victims. "And whereas we believe victims of crime should always be treated with fairness and respect throughout the criminal justice process, protected from the defendant, reasonably heard at public proceedings regarding their case, and given a voice through the process of their case as proposed in Marcy's Law for Nevada. Now therefore, I, Robert Crowe, Mayor of Carson City, with the Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim April 8th, Saturday, April... Through Saturday, April 14th, National Crime Victims Right Week, and do join with representatives of local law enforcement, advocacy, and assistance agencies statewide in Marcy's Law for Nevada's victims' rights effort, seeking to provide assistance and a stronger voice for Nevadans who have been a victim of crime." Brady, what I'm going to ask you to do is stick around for a little bit here. You're welcome to say anything more you would like. But then, I have the proclamation. We'll give it to you. We'll take a picture because it wasn't on the agenda, so we'll do it during public comment. But after we get through with the formal one that's on the agenda, we'll all come down and take a picture, and I'll give you the proclamation then.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Very good. All right. Thank you. Just keeping track with the old meeting law here. All right. All right. All right. Any other public comment? Anybody? I don't see any. So let's... We have public comment as we go through the day and at the beginning and end of all the Redevelopment Authority and at the end of the Supervisors' meeting. We also have public comment as we go through generally on each agenda item. Any changes to the agenda? Mr. City Manager?
No change.
Board members, anybody? All right. Then unless there's an objection, we will take the... We'll adopt the agenda as published. And now we'll move on to special presentations. Item number seven. This is a proclamation for Nevada Moves Day. Who do we have here? Valerie?
Courtney.
Courtney, okay. I didn't see. Okay. Got to get my eyes fixed there, Courtney. All right. Let's come on... Let's come down here.
Thanks for having our proclamation today. We are once again celebrating Nevada Moves Day across the state of Nevada. The Western Nevada Safe Routes to School Program, which is housed at Carson City Public Works, this year will be celebrated with 23 schools in Carson City, Lion, and Douglas Counties. I brought with me today a couple of my school champions. We have been able to fortunately expand the program this year. We have brought on four fantastic advocates who work one-on-one with some of our schools, and they are really doing a fantastic job of growing the program and promoting walking and bicycling here in Carson City to our kids and families in our school district. We want to thank you guys for all the work that you've done to create a more walkable and bikeable community, and we continue to move in that direction. And we hope that the Western Nevada Safe Routes to School Program will be able to create a culture of walking and biking and bring our kids up in a way that they really enjoy and appreciate the ability to walk and bike around our community.
A culture of walking and biking goes right along with a culture of entrepreneurship. That's right on the mark. I have a proclamation for you here, and then I'd like you to... We'll come up and get some pictures taken. The proclamation reads as follows. Nevada Moves Day, March 21, 2018. Whereas parents driving children to school can account for up to 25% of the morning rush hour traffic in the vicinity of schools. And whereas walking and bicycling to school reduces the number of vehicle trips in the vicinity of schools and potential conflicts between vehicles and pedestrians or bicyclists. And whereas reducing the number of vehicles driving students to school results in increased safety, reduced traffic congestion, improved air quality, and less fuel consumption in the vicinity of schools. And whereas the benefits related to physical activity at an early age play a leading role... Activity plays a role at any age. Any age. But we'll talk about early age here, okay? At an early age, it plays a leading role in reducing rates of heart disease, diabetes, and other obesity-related health problems among children. And whereas children walking and bicycling together with parents and caregivers opens opportunities to mentor children about pedestrian and bicycle safety and its benefits related to the health and environment. And whereas walking and bicycling to school offers an opportunity to build physical activity into both parents' and children's daily routines. And whereas children, parents, and community leaders around Nevada are joining together to walk and bicycle to school on Nevada Moves Day, March 21, 2018. Now therefore, I, Robert Crowe, Mayor of Carson City, on behalf of the community and our Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, March 21, 2018, as Nevada Moves Day in Carson City, and encourage citizens to walk or bicycle their children to school while celebrating the benefits of increased safety and health this day and throughout the year. And are there going to... Courtney, are there going to be organized walks this year?
There are a number of schools in the community will be having organized walks from certain locations around the school. Bordewick will be walking once again from the fire station and from the governor's mansion. And we've got some other walks planned at the other schools as well. And we are working with the sheriff's office to make sure we've got some patrols out there, and everyone has been super supportive throughout the city, and we really appreciate the partnerships that we have with this program.
Is the governor walking from the governor's mansion? Do you know?
Maybe.
Maybe?
If he's not, doing something else.
All right. All right. Well, the reason I ask that is if he is or if he even is not, I'd like to... Because I live right next door there, so I'd like to go do that. All right. All right. All right. What time?
7:40 Wednesday.
All right. We got it. All right. Come on up. Let's get a picture. Come on. All right.
Never volunteer until you know the time.
I know. I know.
Right in the early.
Do this here. All right. Yeah, let me know. We'll just keep you advised.
Yeah, I'll shoot you.
All right. Brady? Come on up, Brady. You need somebody to take a picture for you?
They could be so kind.
I got it.
Don't give her to shit.
Big mic drop.
All right. Brady, we'll talk to you about...
Yeah.
All right. Let's take up the consent agenda. Any member of the public want anything pulled from the consent agenda for individual discussion? Seeing none, board members, anybody want something pulled for discussion? I don't see any, so let's entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as published.
I move to approve the consent agenda consisting of items eight and nine on the agenda.
Second.
There's a motion in a couple of seconds. On the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Carried. Okay. Let's take up item number 11. This is for the sheriff to consider the approval of the submission of a Department of Justice Edward Byrne Memorial Grant Program for Behavioral Health Peace Officers. Morning, Kenny. Morning, Sheriff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a possible action to... Or an action to approve the sheriff's office to apply for a grant in accordance with the city's policies. Obviously, the grant amount requires the Board to address this prior to us submitting this grant. And before Assistant Sheriff Tushman does give you a little bit of information, we sat down with Behavioral Health Services, State of Nevada, and roughly, the sheriff's office responds to about 1,500 to 2,000 calls for service a month. As we sat down with them and filtered through our processes, what we determined was that about 60% on any given month of our calls for service have a mental health core component to them. As a result of that, we have a filtering process of trained crisis intervention officers that go out on our calls and refer them over to our MOST team. The MOST team is available to us from the state about three days a week and responds to about 30 to 50 incidents per month. And so Jerome has taken on this task to see if we can get some funding for a MOST officer that will pick up a lot of that slack and address mental health needs here in the community before they become crisis. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jerome.
Morning, Jerome.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and the Board. I appreciate you letting me see you. My name is Jerome Tushman. I'm the Assistant Sheriff here at the Sheriff's Department. Basically, what the sheriff said is exactly right. This is an extension of the MOST program. It's going to be filling in the gaps. Currently, our MOST program, which is the deputy teamed up with a social worker, is three days a week, about 30 hours. This position would further extend that. And at the very core, the two things that this deputy's goal is going to be is to save lives and improve the quality of life of those in our community that are either facing mental health challenges or are family, community members. They will be working different hours and expanding, and what we find is although our MOST officers do outstanding work during the daytime hours, they eventually have to go home, and this deputy will be working into the evening and into the weekend hours, further extending. With the goals for the grant are going to be twofold. One is the reduction of arrests of those on the MOST caseload. And the second part is, once they get into jail, whatever we can do to get them out a little bit quicker. And I think with those two strategies and the collaboration that we'll be having with the community and the challenges we're facing, this is going to be a very valuable and successful program. I'm open to any questions.
We've got a couple. Let me just... Before we move on here, I should let you know that... How long have you been Assistant Sheriff now? Two months?
It feels like a lifetime.
Oh, that hurt. I was going to tell you, I get these free sometimes, but I've had at least two people come up to me and tell me what a great position and a great person you are to have this position. So you should know that. You're well-respected in the community, so...
I'm flattered, and thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
All right. Let's go this way, and then we'll come around.
I've got a couple of questions, and just help me understand this. Number one, the officer's training that we'll take this on, how does that differ? And number two, positions that are grant-funded have a tendency to become permanent positions over time that get absorbed into the payroll. Can this be contracted out instead? So if you can answer those two questions, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you for the question. So to address the contracted out, the unique and remarkable way of doing these things, and we all have critical incident training. We're trying to get 100%. We're probably about two-thirds of our office, and it's pretty intense training. And what we're finding is when we send deputies to this training, when they do get out there into the field, they are so much better at handling all situations. And the basis is we've learned that a person in crisis, we give them time and space. And unless they are being offensive and hurting other people, which in the past, what we used to do is the officer would have two choices, either go in and make an arrest or leave. And what we're finding now is with this training and with our collaboration with the others in the community, we have a lot more choices to do, which may end up still being those two choices, but we also have things such as a soft entry into the criminal justice system through like a citation or release process, or a criminal complaint through the DA's office, or using the Mallory Center, which is an outstanding partnership, or places like the Romwood Center, FISH, and Partnership Carson City. Using all those, and I'm not excluding anyone, but using those resources and that training, we have seen our use of force go down. We've seen the community support go up. And again, by doing these things, and some of the incredible things they do is, it used to be a police officer would go out there, handle the case, go on to the next call. What the MOST team does is they go a couple of days later and check in on them, or they go a couple of days later and check in with the family. And what that's doing is it's putting this early warning system, and we're preventing the problems. And if you see it as kind of a progression, deputies get trained in CIT, then they go to the MOST team. This is the next step. This is probably going to be a deputy who not only has that first level of training, but has proven themselves as being committed to the program with MOST and has taken it to the next level. As far as contracting out, I think the ability to have this training and the fact that these deputies have peace officer powers and a massive amount of discretion, we're giving them the information so they can make their decisions on the field, make the decisions right the first time. One of the goals of the grant will be able to get these people to the right resource right away the first time. And I just don't feel like a contractor could be able to do that with the influence and the authority that we'll be giving these deputies.
And renewal?
Oh, I'm sorry. The sheriff reminded me you were asking about the renewal. So the grant is a four-year program. The first two years, we will assume and will be advocating for 100% funding. Second year, or third year, will be 75% funding. The fourth year, 50% funding. I fully suspect that this will become ingrained, much like we've seen with our SROs, that it'll be so invaluable that the return on investment will continue this to be going on many years to come. Thank you, ma'am.
I apologize.
You did.
I apologize.
Okay. You caught that look, huh? So I had asked the question, what happens to this position if the grant funding is not continued? And I got a little different answer. So this is the same as the school resource officers, where it's a declining grant balance, and then the expectation is that in year five, the city would pick up the cost for the position?
Good.
So, of course, there's a lot of moving parts when it comes to a grant, whether it's us or their federal partners. There's a lot of unpredictability. What we would like to see is this to continue on for several years. The grant, from what I just discussed, is what their plan is going to be. And of course, every year, we have to go back and ask again and again. And if funding is looking like it's not going to be sustained, what we need to do is have plans, and we have these contingencies in place right now, to absorb that position in. And then we would have to figure out how we would continue it on. And without this funding, without this grant funding, it'd be really tough. And to kind of answer, I think, going back to Mr. Dow's question, one of the things that we see here with the MOST team is although they're committed to what they're doing, they get other calls for service. This particular deputy would find themselves having no other responsibility but calls involving mental health. It is something that I think is a real priority for the department and for the city, and I think it's real important that we have plans in place to continue, if not the philosophy of the actual position. But we also need to take this gift of the grant and use it as much as we can to keep this thing going. And when you say absorbed, you mean to into another position within the department that's currently vacant? It would be through attrition. Yes, sir. And what do you estimate the cost savings, the services provided, this program, what do you estimate the cost savings are to the city by keeping people, by diverting them and keeping them out of jail? And I think Kenny has had those figures for us in the past. I just don't remember what they are.
Difficult to put a dollar value on it. We've talked about this before as we tour the jails and such with each one of you. If a person doesn't go to jail, okay, you're saving the cost of meals. You're saving the cost of labor. But that facility is still there. It's still staffed and so on and so forth. But you are saving the process through the criminal justice system by diverting crisis moments to resources versus the jail and the court system, along with deferred sentencing requirements and such. So there is a cost savings outside of the jail, if you will, because you're heading it off before these folks get to court. There is a tremendous amount of quality of life savings, allowing people to stay at home, live at home, and enjoy some level of the quality of life because their issue is not a crime. Their issue is crisis. And with the resources that we have here in Carson, diverting those to facilities such as the Mallory Center and such are features that we have that many, many other communities don't have. So really, to answer your question, is not so much a dollar savings in the jail as it is a savings in the quality of life for people who live here in the community.
Thank you. Approach... My approach to questions have been taken already by the questioners to my right, so I'll attack it from a different direction. I know you also are looking, Sheriff, for helping your traffic, et cetera. If you had the opportunity, in a perfect world, how many deputies would you like to have, and how many do you have now? And putting that in this context, because every deputy can help. Obviously, this particular deputy would help with mental health.
That's a loaded question.
Oh, I'm glad you recognized that.
I've already been rejected by the Board once when somebody asked that question many, many years back, and I think my number was 63 more deputies, and pretty much I got laughed out of the room. We're talking about this MOST grant, and the advantage I have here is I just sat through a conference, if you will, or discussion with the Attorney General's Office yesterday on school violence. That is the topic spreading all the way across the country. Everybody knows that. And many of the law enforcement agencies from around the state have expressed this program, this type of a program, and tiered addressing to crisis as essential to operations. Each of you is obviously already aware, I've spoken with all of you, that we run into traffic management issues here in this community. If you were to ask me an opinion, just for the sake of coffee, right, sitting here, the biggest challenges that we face here in Carson is obviously this mental health, addressing mental health issues and avoiding the violence that sometimes comes along with it. Traffic management is an absolutely critical issue that we will be talking more about. But I will tell you that with the 2010-ish budget cuts during the height of the recession, the department lost a lot of its ability to absorb...
many, many years back, and I think my number was 63 more deputies, and pretty much I got laughed out of the room. We're talking about this MOST grant, and the advantage I have here is I just sat through a conference, if you will, or discussion with the Attorney General's Office yesterday on school violence. That is the topic spreading all the way across the country. Everybody knows that. And many of the law enforcement agencies from around the state have expressed this program, this type of a program, and tiered addressing to crisis as essential to operations. Each of you is obviously already aware, I've spoken with all of you, that we run into traffic management issues here in this community. If you were to ask me an opinion, just for the sake of coffee, right, just sitting here, the biggest challenges that we face here in Carson is obviously this mental health, addressing mental health issues and avoiding the violence that sometimes comes along with it. Traffic management is an absolutely critical issue that we will be talking more about. But I will tell you that with the 2010-ish budget cuts during the height of the recession, the department lost a lot of its ability to absorb, let's call it temporary vacancies, such as those that are off in school to get their statewide certification to be peace officers. And some of us have had very, very direct conversations about that, where in the future down the road, the possibility of using civilian resources versus sworn resources, depending on the capacity of the positions, which is something that we had in place prior to 2010, and would like to get back there. But we continue to this day to use sworn officers to do the majority of those functions. If you looked at the next five years, if you will, I would expect that an agency this size, such as us, might come before the board and suggest as many as five new officer positions, and serious discussions about bringing on some civilians to relieve some of that overtime stress due to training requirements that are levied on law enforcement officers. Does that answer your question?
It came off, sorry. Didn't stay on. Yeah. So kind of in keeping, though, with the decision to hire a position versus, my concern on mental health is more, it's a 24/7 issue. And so I'd like to speak to why one position versus asking for a grant that would give you the specialized training for more staff to be able to respond to any issue, because I think what you're telling us is accurate, that 60% of the calls involve a mental health issue. So I'm wondering if asking for one position versus training dollars to get 20 officers trained, why is one position better than training your officers to respond in a more advantageous manner?
And I appreciate that question, because that goes to the philosophy of the entire regional response here, and not just Carson City, but throughout our region. And in fact, as some of our Southern Nevada partners have said, this MOST positions, and what that is, is a mobile outreach officer-type position, that is a joint collaboration with State Behavioral Health Services, and is moving very, very strongly. That is the primary link in resources to divert somebody from criminal justice over to services. It's essential that that is the focus of the position. Right now, Ms. Becca Bach is our charge that is on the street. She also shares that responsibility over in Lion County, where she provides services over there. The challenge is that with this one person that is provided by the state, which we are at risk of losing, obviously, we always know that, and that question was asked kind of earlier, the loss of this philosophy or this functional responsibility could disconnect us from the state. And I'm an advocate that the state must continue its commitment to mobile outreach and attending to crisis through resource alignment at the lowest level possible. This is one step up from, up from, the regular patrol officers' responsibilities, knowledge, resource abilities. Those officers are referring people into the MOST program. And the MOST program is our direct link to the MOST amount of resources here in Carson, including CTH, Behavioral Health, the state health services, and so on.
So, okay, so what I'm getting then is you're going to say it's actually a caseload-driven, this officer will be assigned a caseload. Is that a clearer picture then?
Yes, ma'am. I think I'll clarify that by saying there will be a caseload brought to them, and the amount of time that this particular officer will have to be spending with these people. We had a case the other day where a person made a threat, and I think when we started looking at it, we had to bring in someone on overtime, basically, to do it, who has a specialized training and has the heart and the desire to do it right. And it took, let's say, two workdays to clarify this and bring the information back to us to say, this person needs services, this person has some issues, this person is of minimal threat. And I think looking at our environment today, that person would be put onto the caseload, and they would continue to be following up. But I don't want to say that this officer is going to be a caseworker. However, there will be certain people that will be consistently coming onto their radar and leaving, and that will be the basis of how we look at the statistics on how we're doing or not.
So that leads me kind of, when I look at your material, can you tell me on the salary and wage where you put $56,835 as a level, is that a beginning officer? Because I'm assuming you're actually going to take an experienced officer and then hire a backfill at a lesser level. So I'm just concerned in the grant that are we putting the right cost centers to this position?
And that's a fabulous question. What we did is we looked at, for this particular one, is a step three. What we wanted to do is, we don't want to ask for too much in the grant, and I think that's where you're going, ma'am. And we also don't want to ask for not enough. Luckily, when it comes down to the actual grant and application, there's sometimes some negotiations. And also, the city policy allows us 10% on either direction. So what we might be asking for is a generalized number, it is an average number. And I think what you will probably see is a revision to that number when it comes to the actual grant.
So, if I may? So that kind of leads me to just a philosophical issue here. And this grant isn't due till April 6. And one of my concerns is we don't have any data to see what goal sets or any of that that you'll be applying for. And so it's just a philosophical issue I have about allowing people to go apply for a grant with no data of what you're going to say you're going to accomplish. And so, and that's in general, just for the city, not the sheriff's office, right? Everybody coming up and saying, can we go apply for a grant, and we don't have any grant material. So why can't we have a completed grant application that we can review and say, yes, go forth and apply for that grant?
Philosophically, I would agree with you. And I kind of touched on that at the beginning, where the base that we look at right now, about 60% of our call volume does have a mental health component to it. And of those, our MOST officer right now is addressing anywhere between 30 and 50 per month. She would be considered, if she were an actual city employee, to be basically a part-timer. This would expand that operation to full-time. And so you could look at the probability of doubling those numbers, addressing at least twice the number of people that are falling into it. And as Jerome said, looking at MOST clients and reducing the amount of those persons going to jail for offenses.
My question is, could you complete the application and bring it back to us on April 5 for approval? And you could make your deadlines in time, but we'd have an actual grant application that we could approve. That's what my question is. Do you do it the state till the 6th, right? So you could come on our next agenda with your actual application for us to approve. Right? It's just, again, it's just philosophical for me to say, I hate to approve you to apply for things that I don't know what you're saying in the grant application. You get the grant, and then if we don't like it, we would have to say no, right? Which isn't going to help us with funders in the future if we turn down a grant that they worked so hard to give us. So I just, I just really prefer to see the applications before.
How about this philosophical? Because grants are always applied for online. We could work that grant through and send it to you offline, so that you would have those details. That does remain a possibility.
Prior to the sheriff hitting send on the application online?
Yeah.
So you'd have visibility on it. If the sheriff can do that, would that be adequate?
You know, even, if I may, okay. Even if the component pieces that you could give us, there were, you have to put the objectives and what you're going to put in the report for the measurables. And I think that's always what I'm interested in the grant, that, you know, Carson City is suggesting that we're going to do 30 outputs per quarter, and that's what you're going to report on, because it's important that I feel comfortable that what we say to the grantor, the city can actually perform. And that's the component that I'm interested in, right? Because like you said, the position, all of that is pretty standard, but I'm very interested in the commitment portion of the grant. So if you could even just type that part up that you know you're going to submit, it would help.
Sorry. I apologize. Sorry about that. I can give you those numbers, but I would reiterate, we are looking at doubling the current numbers that we have been tracking for the last several years, that the MOST program has been following. The 30 to 50 calls for service a month, we anticipate those will at least double. The other measurable item that you're going to, that we hope to anticipate, is that those mental health consults in the jail come down. We are seeing a leveling, but we would prefer to see those numbers come down, those MOST persons, persons under the MOST system that end up in the jail. Those are going to be the measurable goals.
Thank you. I'm curious to hear what you have to say, because Lori's question about training more officers to do some or all of this type of thing. Are there grants available for that, or do you know, or do you search for those? And are you thinking about doing that also, if, whether we do this or not, in conjunction with it? And then I have a follow-up.
We began training our officers on crisis intervention probably in the 2000, I'm going to say 2010 time period, when we saw that mental health was impacting law enforcement all the way across the country so severely. Crisis intervention is, provides for the officers to detect, respond, and facilitate those calls for service where mental health issues are at the core. They don't provide that training to access and make the commitment of the labor resources that we engage with in other organizations. Right now, we have a very, very large collaboration here in this community, and it's looked at as one of the leading in the area when it comes to mental health. I don't think that the sheriff's office has the ability to extract somebody else from our system, from our current structure. You get back to, how many officers do you need? We do not have the ability to extract an officer, train him through the behavioral health system, and commit that labor, because that would further reduce our ability to manage our current caseload. So adding on this functional responsibility, as I said to Lori, is intended to increase those numbers of mobile outreach and decrease those numbers of mental health consults in the detention environment.
So I think I got out of that, no, you're not looking for those grants, because that would cause other problems?
It would definitely cause other problems, yes, sir.
Secondarily, just to follow up, and I want to tease my colleague Lori a little bit, because we had a conversation a couple of weeks ago about philosophy. And she said she didn't care much about my philosophy. Obviously, she cares about hers. But it was in a different context, so I won't hold her feet to the fire. But, and I'm sorry about my phone, by the way. I thought I turned it off. I want to piggyback on what she said, though, because this is a concern of mine across the city. This is not for the sheriff, but everybody in city government. We ask questions up here because we don't either understand or don't think we have enough information. And her thoughts about getting the information fully, and that's why we're here, you're giving us, you're not holding back on us. But it's good to have these things in line before we go and make a decision at a policy level. And after a year or so on this board, and actually, before that, when I was covering it as a reporter, I have noticed that that is part of the problem, whether inadvertent or inadvertent, sometimes there's not sufficient information for the decisions to be made, which is why sometimes we put things off. So just putting that out there on a philosophical basis, I think all five of us up here like as much information as we can get on these things.
Brad has a question, but let me, just while fresh in my mind here. Would, if you were to complete the grant application, a completed grant application, would the information on that application give us more detail on what you've talked about here today?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, as everybody in the city knows, I'm always an advocate for more information. So I would support John and Lori's request, you know, to see the grant application and bring this back at the next meeting.
You got enough time, Sheriff? When's the next meeting? The next meeting's April 1?
Yeah, it'll be tight, but we can do it.
All right. April 5. All right. Good.
I'll just put on the record, overall, you know, that I'm in support, but I just need the data before I can give a final, just so you know.
Ditto. And in terms of, in terms of the going forward, I don't think there's indications we're not interested in mental health MOST deputy, because this is a huge problem. We do understand that.
Could not agree with you more, and that was a primary, primary emphasis all the way through yesterday with the Attorney General's Office, our response to these crises.
You know, we just have to ask these questions, because we see four years and five years into the future, whether we're here or not, somebody's going to have to cough up the money if the grant goes away.
Kenny, just one last question here before we move off tonight. We're going to move it to the next agenda, but are we looking at this next agenda, next budgets, we're getting ready, we're doing the budget now, are we looking at any of these grants, positions where the grant funding has gone away, and now we are folding an employee in?
Interesting comment. I just met with our state grantors yesterday. We've met with them quite a few times over the recent. We have several grants going right now. Our school resource officers are on grants, our gang units are on grants, our drug response units are on grants. We have several of these, and they're dwindling on down, as the finance officer knows very, very well. I would like to get to a point where we can refocus our grant efforts on something else, because these are becoming smaller and smaller grants, and they still take the same amount of labor. I think it was Karen who asked the question, how much are these worth? When you start getting down into $20,000 and $30,000 grant, supplementing salaries, and it's been going on forever, it's time to get off of those. If they're truly a priority to the city, then it needs to be a city function. And we have several of those that are long. Our school resource grant ends this year, as the board is aware, ends as far as funding to us. Our gang grant, I believe, will probably dwindle on down within the next two years. And I really look for, to address your question directly, those needs of the department, where can we get some grant funding for those priority issues? And that's really the focus.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Stay there, because we're going to do body cams. All right. We're going to put this on a next agenda then. Let's take up item 12 Alpha, body cameras.
And I'm going to introduce Laura, because I just want to. This is an action on the body cameras, and this board is well aware of the process that we've been going through for the year. And the only reason I wanted to do the introduction to Laura is I've worked with her very, very closely on this matter, and this board should know, or at least acknowledge, Ms. Rader has just done a fantastic job. This has been one of the rare opportunities that I've had to work so closely with her on a very on a very, very large issue, and her attention to the detail was just phenomenal. And I just wanted to put that plug in for you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I'm well aware that she dots the i's and crosses the t's on all the RFP processes, believe me. I see it every time. Okay. All right. Take us up. You want some more accolades, or you want to talk to us?
I'm good. I didn't need to put blush on this morning, I'm good.
All right, all right.
Laura Rader purchasing contracts. This is to approve the purchase of a body worn camera system through the state's joint contract with Axon Enterprise, for an amount not to exceed $387,913.34. This will be over a five-year period to be funded from the 911 surcharge fund. The total project will cost $515,703.60, which includes the internet, the cabling, retrofrit, and additional internet charges. This project is a result of Senate Bill 176 passing mandating that we have to have body worn cams effective July 1st. And we have an Axon representative here, if there are any additional questions.
Okay. Kenny, you want to add anything? Well, I think we know what's going on here. It's one of those things. All right. Brad?
Eric. Could you please go through what we talked about yesterday about the storage requirements? Because in the past, you know, when we've looked at implementing this over the last couple of years, since it was passed through the legislative process, you know, our biggest concern was storage of data and the cost of that. So can you walk us through that and how that's going to work under this contract?
So I had a conversation with Chris from Axon yesterday. The way that I understand this program is working, each body cam that they buy has unlimited storage. So going forward, in their cloud solution, any video or photos will be uploaded to their system, and there's no cost to us in addition to the charges that we're seeing on the quotes.
And then in the contract, there's two more line items for additional storage.
Yes. So the additional storage is for legacy systems, historical, anything that we want to put up there that is not related to the camera. So like right now, I know that they did demos, they did some reviews on various different camera systems. So I can see them taking some of the older photos that they've had over the last year or so, doing these, and putting them up there, just using that storage for this capability.
Thank you. And then my last question is, I talked to representatives down in Douglas County and then up in Reno. And Douglas County is spending about half a million dollars to implement their body camera system. We're spending about $400,000 on the cameras, about $500,000 on the total system. Reno is spending about a million. So my question is, and this might be for the representative, I'm not quite clear why Reno is going to be able to implement a camera system, a body camera system, for approximately twice what Carson and Douglas are having to spend, when they're literally 10 times bigger than we are. So anybody that has any ideas on that, if you could help me out?
I can help you out just a little bit, and maybe Laura and somebody else can chime in. It's almost an apples to oranges type of a comparison. This contract is a joint contract. It's the same allowances and equipping that Nevada Highway Patrol, Department of Public Safety is using. We opted for that solution in order to give you the most economical approach. Comparison to Reno, I've not even heard that one. Douglas County is looking at the same system as they preferred, and I'm certain that they're watching us now and smiling as we talk. And Lyon County as well, I've spoken with them as recently as yesterday. They too are looking at this very, very same system.
Is it possible that the Reno system doesn't include the storage cost? I mean, it just seems like there's a pretty, okay, this is an offline conversation, we'll come back to this later, but if, if maybe Kenny, you can make an inquiry and...
There's, I have never researched Reno, have not, so I would be unable to answer it.
Maybe a phone call, just if you can, going forward. It'd just be interesting to see what it is that they're doing, just so that we can compare.
Yeah, I would have no problem doing that. We can find out.
I guess it was probably just that there's a licensing fee component, and that's probably pretty stable across the systems. So everybody's in for the $90,000 to $100,000 per year to be licensed to use the software, because there's a licensing fee. And then the up charge is based on the number of officers that you have to buy a camera for. So I'm going to guess that's really, your baseline's the same, it doesn't matter whether you're going to have one camera or 50 cameras, you're going to pay the licensing fee. And so I'm going to, it'll be interesting to see, but I'm going to bet that's the...
We have an Axon representative here, I don't know.
Right, that's the cross.
I don't know if you're up to speed on the financial side of this. Are you technical or dollars? Or both?
More than dollars, I think, so to speak.
Okay. Why don't you, if you can, see if you can take a, are you doing Reno's as well?
First, good morning. My name is Chris Dubek with Axon Enterprise. We have different representatives that work with kind of our larger, major city agencies. So Reno and Washto County is a different representative of Axon, and I've worked directly with Sparks on their program, and I've worked with Douglas County as well, as well as obviously City Carson. What I can say is that one of the advantages of the NHP contract was a fixed pricing model. So we're pretty much line for line with each agency comparatively, and fixed discount thresholds as well for those body worn cameras and those licenses. I could do the due diligence and pull up the exact program that Reno is doing, but I'm pretty confident it's in line with what the city is doing here.
And again, I'm not complaining about the cost of this contract, because we've been aware of the costs here for the last two years. We budgeted for it, we've come up with a revenue source for it. So we've gone through this process over an extended period of time. Maybe this is rumor, maybe the information's not accurate, but since there is such a discrepancy, I'm just curious, and I'd like to find out if possible.
Absolutely, and I can get that information to Laura. You're welcome.
Okay. Anybody else? Public, anybody want to weigh in? Public comment on this issue? Anybody? I don't see any. So let's take a motion on this, and we'll get the information to you, Sue Wazza-Bunkowski. Somebody want to do a motion? We can do it, I think.
Somebody already pushed it.
Somebody already pushed it.
I didn't push it.
I didn't push it either. But I'll do it.
I did the second.
Where is it? I don't have it here.
I'll make the motion.
Technical difficulties.
Yes. I move to approve the purchase of a body worn camera system through joint contract with Axon Enterprise Inc., formerly Taser International. The state of Nevada RFP, contract number 3273, for an amount not to exceed $387,903.34 over a five-year period to be funded from the 911 surcharge fund.
There's a motion, a couple of seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Laura. All right, you're going to take, you there for external audit? All right. Why don't you tell us the process for external audit, what you did, where we are, then we'll go from there.
All right, good morning. The city issued an RFP, our current external auditors, the contract has expired, and through the RFP process, the evaluators went through the scores, as well as we did interviews, and selected recommending Piercy, Bowler, Taylor, and Kern. So we are here today to approve contract 1718-136, External Audit Services with Piercy, Bowler, Taylor, and Kern, for not to exceed annual amount of $98,750, plus an annual contingency amount of $22,000, if needed, for auditing additional major federal grant programs, for the audits of fiscal year 18, 19, and 20. And this will be funded from various account funds. And this is also to designate Piercy, Bowler, Taylor, and Kern as the audit firm of fiscal year 17, 18. We also have a representative from Piercy, Bowler, Taylor, and Kern.
Where's Piercy Bowler? Are you in Reno? Go ahead.
I'm Ralph Piercy, I'm one of the founding shareholders of Piercy, Bowler, Taylor, and Kern. We have offices in three cities, Las Vegas is our largest office, Salt Lake City, and Reno. So Reno is actually our smallest office, and that's where I spend most of my time.
Okay. Questions? Anybody? Public comment? Anybody want to weigh in? Motion's in order.
I move to approve contract number 1718-136, External Audit Services with Piercy, Bowler, Taylor, and Kern pursuant to NRS 354.624, for not to exceed annual amount of $98,750, and an annual contingency amount of $22,000, if needed, for auditing additional major federal grant programs, for the audits of fiscal years 2018, 2019, and 2020, to be funded from the various funds, and to designate Piercy, Bowler, Taylor, and Kern as the auditing firm for fiscal year 2017, 2018.
Motion, second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity to be of service.
I'm sure that you'll be camping out in our offices too, so...
We like to say that one of the distinguishing features of our firm is you see a principal manager much more frequently than some of the other firms, so you may get tired of seeing me in your office.
Yeah, well, you know, it's important for, to have, you know, it's obviously something to have, we've got to have an external auditor, there's no doubt about that. And I want to tell you, this board relies heavily on the results of the external auditor. So, you know, I guess the message there is, and I know you would, you're licensed CPA, do your job, do it well, and we'll all be on the same foot.
Yeah, we take that responsibility very seriously, so...
Okay. And, you know, Jason, I assume that, you know, there's enough people in Reno that, you know, if there's a question or something like that, we can go to Reno, not Las Vegas?
Yeah. I'm pretty much your primary contact.
All right. Very good. Okay. All right, thank you. Okay.
And by the way, the city of Reno goes to the same place. So we do work for the city of Reno, as well as Douglas County, so...
Okay. Very good. Good to know. All right. All right. Let's take up 13 Alpha, Audit Committee Recommendations to Approve the Completed Remediation Plans from Small Works Project Review, HTE. Tell us what's going on here, and what the Audit Committee recommends.
Thank you. Jason, I'm the Chief Financial Officer. So the Audit Committee met and recommended closing the attached items from the Small Works Project Review and the HTE Access Controls Testing. Both of those recommendations, audit findings, and their recommendations are included as attachments to here. I will note, the recommendations were based off of two primary concerns. If the item was going to be resolved through the new ERP system, we were not going to wait for the new ERP system to implement, to close the agenda item. And then other items were implemented in advance of the ERP system, project, so...
Instead of an acronym, if you want to spell that out, or if you say it out loud? ERP, what, is that ERP or ERP?
That is the Human Resources and Financial Management Program for the entire city.
Okay. All right. All right. Any board members? Are we okay with this Audit Committee?
I'll just make a comment that the Audit Committee's, you know, really pleased at how serious the city takes the recommendations, and how much they've strived to get things accomplished. And as Jason indicated, we had to make the decision on the items that would be remedied through the new computer system, there just was no reason to keep those open. We may, at a later time, then turn around a year after implementation of the new computer system, and maybe retest some of those issues to see that they're actually resolved. But we'll come back to those after, so I'm very comfortable with the Audit Committee's recommendation to close these.
Helpful. All right. Public comment, anybody? Okay. Board, motions in order.
I move to accept the Audit Committee's recommendation to approve the completed remediation plans from the Small Works Projects Review and the HTE, Access Controls Testing, and remove the completed findings from the Audit Findings Tracking Summary Report.
There's a motion and a second. Do we have electronic voting? Everybody got it? Okay. All in favor, signal by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried. Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Let's take up the next item, 13 Bravo, Capital Asset Issues deletion.
This is coming out of the fiscal year 2017. We're requesting your permission to remove these assets from the capital asset listing for both the governmental funds and the business type activity funds. I will note that the book value for the capital assets in the governmental funds is $533,696, and there was zero book value remaining on the business type activities amounts.
So the account had half a million dollars in it, and there was zero value to it?
Fully depreciated.
They were fully depreciated, so...
They're old. They're old.
Like John, he's fully depreciated.
Fully depreciated, yeah.
All right. Board members, anything?
Yeah, Jason, just one comment, and that is, maybe over the next year, by the time we get this presentation next year, as we talked about, maybe we can update the spreadsheets a little bit, so they give a little more pertinent information. I mean, when I get a sheet that has all zeros on it, it just seems like somebody wasted some time.
Yes. We'll make sure that the information is more meaningful for you.
Thanks.
All right. Public comment, anybody? Everybody understand what we're doing here? All right. Motion's in order. Motion, sue by the back row.
I move to allow the Finance Department to delete capital assets from the city's capital asset listing for fiscal year 2017 as presented.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried. Thank you. All right. Thanks, Jason. All right. Good news, by the way, on sales tax.
Santa Claus came, and he camped out here for a week, I think.
All right. We're going to, we're going to take a five, 10-minute break here, we're moving pretty fast, so we'll be in recess for five or 10 minutes. I have the gavel back, so you'll hear me. All right. Good. All right, we're going to bring the meeting of the Board of Supervisors back to order. Let's see, where are we? We're now on item 14 Alpha. This is the Public Guardian. Deborah, tell us what's been going on in your world of public guardians.
I will. Good morning. Our interns returned at the end of January, and they each have a small caseload as part of their learning agreement. It's overseen by myself and my deputy. They visit each of their clients weekly and advocate for them and write reports on their interactions. Time is getting short for our interns as they will graduate in May and will be done with their internship the end of April. And they've been a big help to our office. We will miss them. I started the 2017 tax returns for all my clients with estates and those who have died in 2017. So far, I've prepared 60 returns. This is a big project and involves all staff to copy certified letters of guardianship with the court and send off returns to the IRS. This is in addition to our regular duties overseeing the care and safety of our clients. So I'll get down to my breakdown. Number of full-time employees, three. We have our social workers through the end of April. Appropriate referrals for quarter, for, per quarter is two. However, it's increasingly difficult getting, getting people who need guardians onboard because of the problems we're having with Washa Legal Services.
I don't, I don't understand that.
Yeah, I, to me, we're supposed to be on the same side.
So what's, I know...
But they're, they're contesting every guardianship.
Who is?
And we have to go to Washa Legal Services. And we're having to go to court two and three times when these people absolutely need...
How many, how many have you, how many have you had turned down, then, as a result of...
One, that's, and we have like four in the process.
And basically, what's the nature of the challenge?
We had one that the wife wanted to take guardianship, but then when she got him home, she realized she couldn't do it. So she said, "I'm done." So we thought on court, in court on Tuesday, that we would just go ahead and do a temporary guardianship, but the Washa Legal Services attorney challenged it because she's challenging his competency. So now we've had to subpoena the psychiatrist who did the report on him and BHS staff to say, yes, he is incompetent.
The science challenge?
Yeah. But, I mean, every client's going to say, "I don't want a guardian, I want to go home." But it's just not possible for...
Washa Legal Services representing the proposed ward?
Mm-hmm. Yes, and our judges have contracted with them, so we're kind of stuck right now.
So the Washa Legal Services is under contract with who?
With the judges, as far as...
With the courts.
With the courts.
Mr. Mayor, I know you get it, Mr. Mayor, but for the public who may be listening, there was, I mean, there was a legitimate problem in other counties where guardianship was abused, and Justice Hardesty and others rightfully thought that the wards needed to have independent representation. And sometimes, like a lot of other well-intentioned efforts, I think what the guardian is saying is that they may have overshot on this one, and instead of it, you know, providing that, you know, that, that dispassionate advocate for the ward, it is now just gumming up what should be a normal procedure. I don't want to speak for you, but...
That's exactly right. Some of these people really need a guardian. They cannot handle their affairs. We had to call law enforcement because this particular client had a fight with his wife because she didn't want to be guardian, and he took off in the streets. We had to call law enforcement because he's just wandering the streets. He, he has dementia. You know, to keep him safe, we had to have him taken into custody. So it's, it's a big problem. So, so far, we have 41 in skilled nursing, 10 in assisted living, six in their own home, three in group homes, out-of-state placement, we still have seven. We would like to bring those people back whenever we can, hopefully when, maybe when the, the new Carson Tahoe facility opens. Deceased cases, they're opening at memory care and skilled nursing.
But you said, bring them back?
Bring them back from out of state.
You've got them placed out of state right now?
Right. Because we don't have the resources here to place them.
Yeah, shoot, we'll just, go ahead, go, go.
So previously, when you gave your report, you said that some of those are placed out of state because there are no facilities in Nevada that provide the service that they need. So of the seven that are out of state, has that changed, then? Do we now have in-state facilities?
Well, we're looking when that, when the new facility opens, I think in June.
But would that apply to all seven, or just...
No, not necessarily. Some of them.
Okay, so it's just some of them that you are talking about potentially bringing back?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Um, deceased cases not closed, we have seven. We have no drop cases so far. Pending cases, two, not placed. We have three people that are in various locations alike as in NAMS or trying to get them placed somewhere. Fees collected from 12 2017 through the end of February is $7,353.24, and the number on Medicaid or pending is 49.
Go back to the not placed, I know, maybe it's a small matter. What do you mean by not placed?
That means that they're in a temporary situation. I have one at Mallory right now. I have one at, like I said, NAMS. I can't think of what the third one is, but we're, we have to go through every facility in Nevada in order to either have them, accept them or turn them down, and then we have to look at out-of-state placement. That's just the way the, the system is right now.
Do we know if how many of these are veterans, if any?
Well, the two I'm thinking of, they're, they're lifelong mental illness cases, so no.
No, how about any of the, how about any of your guardianship cases?
Oh, yeah, we absolutely have veterans. And they're visited by a rep from the VA quarterly, I think.
All right, all right. Board, anything? Public comment? All right. Let's see, do we do a motion on this one, or do we just take it? Okay. Thanks, Deborah, very much.
Thank you.
All right. All right, let's take up item 15 Alpha. This is a consideration of possible approval of Carson City Health and Human Services for subgrante for expectant and parenting teens, fathers, women, and their families through the maternal, child, and adolescent health section. I'm always amazed at how long these things are. I mean, it seems like, you know, the, they're either, they're either 20 or 30 words long on how they are, or they're full of acronyms where you don't know what you're talking about. So tell us what's going on here.
So for the record, Nikki Aker, Director of Carson City Health and Human Services, and I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, and we try and make it as simple as possible and cut them down. Okay, this is, we're asking for permission to apply as a subgrante to the State of Nevada for the Expectant and Parenting Teen Women, Father, and Their Families Grant. This is a grant that the state is writing, and they have asked us to be a subgrante. This grant is for an approximate amount of $300,000 to be evenly distributed over two years, from July 1st, 2018, to June 20th, or, excuse me, June 30th, 2020. This was a grant that we applied for last year. We got approval from the Board to apply. The state was not funded, and they are going to try and go for funding again. And I have got Veronica Gallis, who is our Clinical Manager of Clinical Services, that she can address some of the objectives that they're looking at within this grant, and then we both can answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, so, good morning, Ronnie Gallis, for the record. When the state approached us again about this particular grant, we again reached out to the school district, our contacts within the school, and within Carson Tahoe Regional Medical Center's Moms Program, because this is working with women and men who are expectant or, and then will have their babies, and this grant is to follow them for a couple of, of years. And basically, the purposes, and basically, both the school and the Moms Program indicated to us that this was not something being provided to the clients that are being seen in there. to us that this was not something being provided to the clients that are being seen in their organizations. And so, basically, the goals have to do with teens that are pregnant and young adults that are pregnant that are in school, in high school or secondary education, to help them stay in high school and secondary education. Once they have their babies, it's to, and so there'll be tracking related to that. It would also involve folks who are in unstable housing, assisting them towards stable housing, so that would be something that would be tracked, moving people from, so it's education, housing, folks, not so much teens, but the young adults, if they're not in school, not working, want to be working, it's moving them into employment, job readiness. So those are some of the items that would be, would be objectives and look towards accomplishing.
We have some questions up here, I suspect. Go.
Hi, Ronnie. What kind of caseload are you projecting?
At this point, it, there would be two contract community health worker positions, and the caseload would be anywhere from total for the grant, 65 to 85 families, so about 30 families per caseworker, which is, we've been working with, the state has a robust home visiting community health worker program that's been in existence for, I can't, I don't want to quote how many years, but, so we're sort of using their expertise in determining what is an adequate caseload.
And then in terms of helping people be productive and move into the, the workforce and that sort of thing, will you be partnering with Join and with other agencies such as that to get them trained and, and able to provide for their family?
Right, so part of the purpose of it is to connect folks with Carson City Human Services, Ron Wood, Join, Partnership, Community Resources. So basically, making sure people are connected to the resources that exist, not creating new resources.
And I think that will align very nicely with the way our Community Health Improvement Plan is laying out, is looking at that workforce. And so having that happening at the same time as this will be beneficial.
Ronnie, where, how are the recipients chosen? Where are the referrals coming from?
So they would come from the Moms Program, they would come from the school nurses at the high school, and, and then they would come from the Health and Human Services, clinical services as well.
But it's all volunteer, the recipients are gonna volunteer for the program? There's no court enforced or court referred cases that would go into this?
No, they're, at this point, I mean, certainly, courts could refer people into this, but there would be no, we can't do, it has to be a voluntary, so the program would be outlined to the expectant woman, the, the father, potential father, and then it would be, they would have to voluntarily be willing to be a part of the program.
The reason I ask is because my feeling is that the recipients that would get the most out of this program are the ones that are not likely to volunteer for it. And I'm thinking of one particular case, that's a CASA case, where a female got pregnant at 15, had a child, she was also a drug addict, the child was taken away from her, now she's pregnant again. So that is somebody who could use this program. How do you get somebody like that into the program? Or is there another program? You know, I mean, I'm just wondering if we're solving a problem or if we're just providing an entitlement.
Okay. Part of it is, is having the relationship with the schools and the Moms Program. These folks are, have the relationship with those organizations. And we have talked with both the Moms Program and the, the school nurses about potentially, if folks aren't immediately trusting or, or wanting the services, that we could work something out where the community health workers actually go onsite to the Moms Program and the school, and as part of their regular appointments, meet with folks, sort of build a little bit of a relationship, and then offer the program again. So there, you are right that it, it, it's a challenge when folks may or may not see the value of it, but, but many, much of it is about, we have found much of it in our community is about if the school nurse who this person has a relationship with vouches for something and says, this would be really important, and I see you doing well in this, that there's more buy-in from people doing it that way than us just like cold-calling somebody and saying, hey, we have this great program and we want you to be enrolled.
And one thing that we're seeing in our housing program, we now have a community health worker that is working with some of those individuals. And it's successful when you've got that case management, that there's a doctor's appointment that's scheduled, and that community health worker is following up with the person and saying, do you have transportation to the doctors? You know, what do you need to get there? And then following up, and maybe even attending the doctor's appointment, and then following up, do you understand what the doctor told you about this medication? Do you understand that you need to take it every day? So we're seeing some successes there. It's that, what we call, you know, the intensive case management.
And then finally, you know, the questions that we always ask are about match and can you use contract labor? And both of those we're answering in here, there is no match on this grant, and contract staff will be hired rather than bringing on a, a city position.
Correct. We recognize that it's a two-year grant, and, and we wouldn't have any plan of sustaining it beyond the two years unless the grant got renewed.
Okay. Other question from the board? Public comment on this issue? I don't see any. We ready for a motion? Motion's in order.
I move to approve the Carson City Health and Human Services applying as a sub-grantee for the expectant and parenting teens, women, fathers, and their families grant to the maternal, child, and adolescent health section within the State of Nevada Division of Public and Behavioral Health. The approximate amount will be $300,000 to be evenly distributed over a two-year project period from July 1, 2018 through June 30th of 2020.
There's a motion and a second, and I don't see a, have any, you got your look? Oh, there it is. Okay. All in favor, sooner or later, saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried. You know, before you leave, go ahead and say, go ahead.
Thank you. I just also, following the previous conversation on applying for grants, yes, we definitely can include objectives of the grant in the future. I just, from coming from a department that is very heavily grant-funded, I, some concern that I have is putting together an entire grant application and bringing it forth, just in permission to apply. Some of these grant applications take a very long time to put together. I mean, I'm working on the grant right now for the sexual assault program. It's not a very large grant, but it still takes a lot of my time to put it together. So, you know, moving forward, putting an entire grant application together just to come and ask for permission to apply can, it potentially could waste a lot of our time. But Ronnie has had a suggestion maybe of what we could ask, and you know what information all you would need.
We gotta be careful about going off the open meeting here.
Okay.
Let's see what you got, and then we'll see if the evil eye is gonna, gonna get me.
This is in, as it relates to an, to an application for, for a grant, so it's appropriate.
All right, all right.
Yeah, I was just having the discussion with Nikki and saying that, you know, I appreciate the board's involvement and, and, but it would be nice if the city had a template of the, the various things that would be important, goals, objectives, because as Nikki said, some of these grants can take 10 to 20 hours to actually create, they can be 40 to 50 pages long, and, and to, to do all that work and then come before the board, and if the board says no, then 20 hours has been utilized to create all that material, and then we walk away. So, you know, so my hope would be there would be something that meets both needs.
And again, being from a department that is very heavily grant-funded, I would volunteer to work with all of you and come up with that template.
Okay. Not, okay. Not certain how far that goes, but we'll see what happens there. John?
Yeah, good, good suggestions, and I assume you're referring to other earlier talk about grants. You, you put in the part, though, that there's a lot of concern up here about, and that is, is this grant gonna go away? And if it goes away, are we gonna get stuck with trying to fill the hole? Those, those are two very important things you've talked about. Yeah, it's a good idea on the template, because we do like to have as much information as we can get, but at the same time, we don't want you spending, spinning your wheels.
I'll just comment that on yours, at least you attached the actual grant parameters and the announcements, so we were able to read through the potential things we'd be agreeing to, right? So when I can read through the grant and it says, here's the objectives of the grant, here are the conditions of any grant, I was able to at least read through those and make sure there wasn't anything I was gonna object to on behalf of the city. But certainly, your actual goals and objectives of what you want to achieve and what you're gonna tell them we're gonna achieve for the grant, I think, is of utmost importance to us, right? Why are we applying? It's not just to get a position or to meet some need, that you define the need and then tell us how this grant's gonna accomplish it.
I just want to make a comment. I think Health and Human Services has done an exemplary job of doing that. So we have what we need, so we're prepared to, with a response when you come before us, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Let me just make a comment, and I don't expect you to answer this, because I don't want to violate open meeting law, but I'll just, since you're here, you probably need to hear this. You know, the Attorney General appointed me to their statewide partnership on opioid, opioid issues, and just so you know, you know, we had our first meeting last week, I think, and one of the issues that, that caught my attention was, you know, on data, real-time data, looking at it? The issue's really whether or not it's a public health issue or a private individual issue. And so, you know, that's a fascinating one. I already told you that, you know, next time I go to one of these meetings, I'll ask you and the sheriff to be with me. You don't have to say anything, so, okay? All right, all right. Anything else, board? All right, thank you very much. All right.
I have a disclosure on this next one.
You do?
Yes, I do.
You, you live up there.
Yes, that's right.
It's a good deal.
It is, but I still have to say that.
Go ahead. All right, we're gonna take up item 16. This is to authorize Parks and Recreation and Open Space Department to submit a grant application so at the land and water, to the Land and Water Conservation Fund and other programs for the fee title, fee title acquisition of 206 acres south of the Timberline subdivision and VC Canyon for open space and passive recreation purposes. Anne, you're gonna, open space, you're gonna?
I have a disclosure before we get going here. NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from participating when I have a disqualifying conflict. I live in Timberline, and so this will affect me. However, this will affect all of the residents of Carson City, as this is a terrific benefit for Carson City as a whole, to have such preserved open space. Further, Nevada Ethics and Government Law recognizes that where everyone's similarly situated will not benefit any more or any less than anyone else affected by the matter. Then a conflict does not exist, and therefore, I will be voting on this matter.
Any other disclosures? I don't see any. Okay. Tell us what's going on.
Good morning, Mayor Supervisors. For the record, Anne Bollinger, Open Space Administrator. With me today, I have a 12-slide presentation. Most of this information is already in your packet, but I did put a presentation together also for the public and for their benefit. First, to begin, where is this property located? It is located on the west side of town. A supervisor about mentioned, it is adjacent to the Timberline subdivision, just to the south side. It is also located just north of, of Ash Canyon. To the east is the college, as well as state lands, and to the west and southwest are public lands. The color designations on the map in front of you, yellow is private lands, blue is Carson City, so quite a bit of blue in there, and green is for service. So this property is adjacent to Carson City lands and would just continue that urban interface on the west side of town in the Carson foothills. On the landscape, pink. Pink is state, state. What does this property look like on the landscape? On the arrow, it's pointing to a knob located between Ash Canyon and Timberline. You can see a few of the trees right in this area. That is the Timberline Canyon subdivision, and the snow and the foothills in front. And to the north, consists of the 206 acres. This property is visible from throughout town. So as supervisor about mentioned, it would be an aesthetic benefit to all the residents. If you can take a minute and just envision what it would be like to be on this property. Standing on the property, you have expansive views to the north, to the east, down to Carson City, to the south, to Ash Canyon, and to Sea Hill. The views are amazing. If it was preserved as open space, this would be preserved for our residents and for the public. But similarly, it would make beautiful views if someone built a home or a couple of large homes on this property. Prior to bringing this item to the Board of Supervisors, I did review the open space plan and reviewed the criteria in the evaluation form. There are nine characteristics identified, and most of the characteristic, characteristics of which we could identify at this time, rated medium to high value for acquisition. Some of those characteristics are the high-value habitat and migration corridor for wildlife, particularly mule deer, but there are also black bear, and a number of bird species have been identified on this property. And birds, of course, fly everywhere, but a number of species have been identified here. Healthy native vegetation, especially the grasses. We do have a little bit of cheat grass, but after the waterfall fire, the reseeding effort in this location took. So there are a lot of great native perennial grasses, native shrubs, and then trees up on the higher elevations to the west. There is a ridge with long views, as demonstrated in the earlier photos. It's visible from throughout Carson City. It is a large acre, there's two parcels, a total acreage of 206 acres. If acquired, it can and will be accessible to the public. In fact, there are existing trails already on the property. And it is located within a source water protection area. The second part of the evaluation form talks about the prioritizing factors. So the item in front of you today is to ask permission to submit grant to the Land and Water Conservation Fund to help share in the cost of acquisition. There is urgency. The property is for sale. The owner is entertaining offers, and in your packet, I identified that the current offer on the table is $450,000. An appraisal has not been done, but at least that's a number that we know that we're working with at this point in time. It is an open space priority area. It is, and on the hillside, we had three priority areas in the open space plan. That was the river corridor, agricultural lands, and the hillside. And specifically, the open space plan talks about the Carson Range foothills. It is identified on the current open space master plan. It connects to other open space parcels, and not just open space, it does connect with other city-owned parcels that are under the jurisdiction of public works. And when this item was discussed with the Open Space Advisory Committee, not only did we have citywide citizen support, but we had regional support. We had residents from Douglas County and Washoe County come to our meeting and talk about how, how they come into Carson City for our trails. So in addition to the open space plan, how does this fit in with the overall Carson City master plan? The larger parcel, the 187-acre parcel, is designated as conservation reserve. With that master plan designation, one house can be built for every 20 acres, so potentially we could look at about nine homes with, with this plan. However, the parcel is within the hillside development or skyline restriction area. And under Carson City Munus Code 18.08, that is the hillside development ordinance, and the ordinance discourages development up in the hillside. and the ordinance discourages development up in the hillside development area with the idea of protecting the scenic qualities in Carson City. It doesn't prohibit development and so if someone were to come forward to community development, there would be a number of items that someone would have to go through, particularly with the fire department and engineering to develop on the hillsides. And then the smaller parcel is already designated as an open space parcel. It is privately owned, but that is the master plan designation. And then the Unified Pathways Master Plan. Currently, in the UPMP, the map shows existing and proposed off-street unpaved double-track trails on the property. This afternoon, you will be reviewing an amendment to the UPMP. So, it's convenient that this item is tied in on the same agenda because the proposed amendment talks about single-track trails. And on this property, there are numerous existing single-track trails. When the Eagle Valley Trails Committee conducted public workshops and received comments, they did ask, where do you recreate? What are your priority areas around Carson City? And so, from their public comments, the Ash Canyon area, Timberline, Hobart, these areas were identified as high priority areas and therefore, in the amendment, these areas are identified under the first-tier projects, so high priority areas. And then the amendment also has several comments from the public related to this. This map shows where the existing single-track trails are. If you can see some of the colors and how these connect with other parcels throughout the area, the purple is a single-track trail. Down to the right is a green, red and yellow. So, there's already a number of trails on the property linking to public property to the west. Naturally, there's the cost-benefit comparison. So, there is a cost of acquisition. At this time, we are proposing to pay up to 50% of the appraised value. That is the match requirement on the land and water conservation grants and the current offer is $450,000. As I mentioned, an appraisal has not been done. So, I can't even take a guess right now where this would fit in in the ballpark. Is this too much? Is it too little? I just don't know that at this point. There would be an impact to property taxes. Currently, the property is under private ownership and they pay about $3,300 every year for property taxes. If it was public, property taxes would not be paid on the property. And future management. If acquired, we don't intend on significant development on this property. We do not intend on building a trailhead. We would maintain the existing trails. We would do some road maintenance. There has been some unrestricted motorized vehicle recreation in the area up the slopes causing erosion and channelization. So, we would come in and try to rehabilitate some of those steep slopes. But we are already in the area, in Ash Canyon. We have property in Ash Canyon. Every year, we do road maintenance and that does cost us $10,000 every year if we have to come to this property. It would really just be a minimal cost. Our park rangers also already patrol in Ash Canyon. Fuels management would be another concern. The fire department is here. They just conducted a mastication treatment on 33 acres of woody vegetation. Talking with Rod Romo, the project that they did would not have to be done to that extent anytime in the near future. Always, the initial treatment is the most expensive. After that, it's just maintenance. And so, it would be my estimate, looking at some of our other properties that are very low impact, it would cost us about $1,000 a year, really, if it's really low impact, just having patrol with our park rangers. The single-track trails on here are already maintained by Muscle Powered, so we have that volunteer effort. When we do have to do bigger treatments such as fuels reduction or road maintenance or sign installation, we are probably looking upwards of $8,000 a year. So, compared to developed parcels, open space is really quite affordable.
Anne, can I ask you a question? Would, if we got this property, would you limit vehicle access back there because backfires are always a concern in terms of fire danger in that neck of the woods?
I haven't looked at that extent. There are a number of roads in the area and it is a challenge. How do we keep them to existing roads? So, at this point, I'm not prepared to answer that question, but I think it's something we need to take a look at. The benefit, if acquired, the benefits are perpetuity. The aesthetic value of protecting the hillsides, the intrinsic value, even if you don't recreate on the property, just knowing that it's there and knowing that it's protected forever. Ecosystem services, ecosystem services, we really don't talk about enough. This is the bigger holistic benefits of everything that open space does and can contribute, such as maintaining native plant communities and pollinator species, soil conservation, aquifer recharge, the spiritual and recreation values of open space. And then there's public access and recreation and economic. I don't know if you realize this, but the Epic Rides Carson City Off-Road Event uses the trails on this property. The current owner allows that, a future owner may not. And I don't know if you saw the Nevada Appeal yesterday, there is an article in the paper talking about epic rides and the outdoor recreation industry in Carson City and the economic impacts that it's been bringing to this town. So, the next steps for you to decide is, do you agree that there should be an acquisition, fee title acquisition of 206 acres and a possible expenditure of $225,000? Depending on that motion, the next steps would be to acquire preliminary title report so we can see the easements, encumbrances, any other issues, potential issues with the property as well as an appraisal. The grant is due May 25th, so I would need both of those items by May 25th. And then if all goes well, I hope to be back with the grant award, acceptance and purchase. Do you have any questions?
So, you said that it's for sale now and this grant application isn't due till May 25th. When's the anticipated award date?
They will review the applications in June and we should receive award letters by October.
October? So, are the owners willing to hold the property out that long?
We're still in those discussions. Likewise with us, we would not want them to sell it from under us. So, I've been talking with Nevada Land Trust, so we would like to have an agreement that we're agreeing to work together. There are other options. If we absolutely need to close by June, I've not used this option, but I know it's available. But the Conservation Fund is an organization that will help upfront money for projects such as this.
So, let me ask the question differently. There is sufficient, what if you don't get the grant? Would the open space purchase it with the dollars we have available?
I will have to go back to them and ask.
I guess I'm just concerned, you go to the Conservation Fund and look some of the other deals and the money doesn't come through and yet, somebody's made a purchase on our behalf. I think we need to be prepared to pay for it if we don't get the grant. And so, again, the question for me at the board level is to understand that means we'd be purchasing it at 100% value and would we do that? And that, so for me, it's not, again, it's never about getting a grant to make a decision, it's should we buy the property? And that's the issue, so.
I had the same question as Lori on if we didn't get the grant, then you have to pay the money back, right? So, the choice at that point is that it comes out of open space or it comes out of open space, right? Okay, so we're pretty clear on that. Would you be bringing back, if we choose to move forward with this, would you then bring another item back to approve the cost of the appraisal? Because that's not included in today's item and that's an additional cost.
Correct, yes. Since I don't really know what the true value of the property is, yes, I would come back with the appraisal and ask if that's acceptable to the board.
The fee.
Oh, the, to try to move this along fast, I have been talking with Nevada Land Trust and due to my workload, I would like to just give them the project, say, help get the preliminary title report, help get the appraisal. We have volunteers who will write the grant, but they'll essentially do the work for me.
So, are you saying they would wrap those costs into the grant then?
Nevada Land Trust is on a miscellaneous contract with us for professional services and so we would just pay through Nevada Land Trust for that appraisal.
Up front, I want to say that I'm a mountain biker, even at my advanced stage, as the mayor has pointed out earlier, and a hiker with a dog that seems to be taking me around rather than me taking the dog around. But even so, I need to ask the questions of, will this create, and you've kind of answered it, more pressure on your maintenance and management because that's been an issue in the past when we were a little more broke than we are now. How do you envision that as it continues? I think this, again, giving my conflict in my own head, due diligence, I think that we need to do this, but at the same time, I don't want to get us down a road where we're in a cul-de-sac.
We are fortunate enough to have an agreement with Muscle Powered and the agreement states that they agree to help us plan, design and maintain trails. In the event Muscle Powered ceases to exist in the future, which I hope doesn't because of the contributions to Carson City, we do have our part-time trails coordinator. We really would like to improve our volunteer program in the department as a whole and so that could be another effort of working with the trails coordinator to coordinate trail maintenance days. Single-track trails do require hand maintenance versus machinery. So, we will really need the assistance of volunteers to help us out. If we have roads, because we bring machinery, we hire a contractor every spring for Ash Canyon Road already, if needed, we can just do the maintenance on this property as well at the same time.
Thank you. Again, showing my leanings up front, I'm a member of Muscle Powered and I'm not particularly active, but I am a member and I think that's a good program. But I do recall that years ago, before I was on the board, we talked about this and there was sort of a hiatus on buying new properties. I take it that's no longer the view.
When there's opportunities in front of us, I think it should be at least presented as an option. If the property is sold and developed, it's lost forever. We don't have a second opportunity.
So, I just want to explore a little bit more. So, in the open space budget, you're indicating you have line item budgetary authority already to pay fees to Nevada land? So, you don't need a separate motion to acquire or to pay them? You have sufficient budget already to accomplish the appraisal work?
Correct, correct. Yes. Your board report just addressed the line item for land acquisition, which would only be for the property, but we do have another line item for professional services and that is the line item. I think we're budgeted $190,000 in this fiscal year and we have a current contract with Nevada Land Trust.
So, just again, kind of wrapping up everything today, it would be great if those, any other costs associated with items, it would be nice if it would be on the staff reports so that we're not looking for the other shoes, the other cost centers, so you don't need a motion to handle that component because you already have authority.
Okay, correct. And I appreciate that request from the board of knowing fully upfront what the costs are. This item came to us really fast in the last month.
Anne, again, on the fire management standpoint, acquiring this land would give you more control over maintenance on that property. I know, having lived through the waterfall fire up there, we couldn't even, the logging of dead timber could not even happen because the owners wouldn't allow that. So, from that standpoint and protecting surrounding homeowners, it's actually a really good acquisition.
Does a buyer or does a seller gain any tax credit if they, or tax benefit if they sell to the city or to another nonprofit?
If they just sell at the appraised value, no. If they donate any part of it, possibly. I have posed that question to Nevada Land Trust in the past. Yes, there was a tax benefit with the new changes in the tax law in December. I don't know how that's been impacted yet, but I have posed that question.
Okay, well, I assume that you're going to be using that in terms of talking to the hams?
Yes.
Because that could be, you know, they may have gotten comparable offers, but if there's a tax benefit to them, that may swing the deal for us. Okay. Second, you know, my own two cents on this, because I've put a lot of miles in that little area right there. This is a remarkable piece of property, remarkable. And, you know, I've probably been trespassing on it all these years, so I want to apologize to the hams.
Or thank them.
I want to thank them for not arresting me. But, you know, and I appreciate the fact, you know, that this is fast coming down. So, anyway, you know, it's kind of where I am, so, okay. Anybody else, Board? We have a number of people here who I think are going to testify in favor. My suggestion, Board, is if we're comfortable with, I don't know if anybody in opposition of this out there? My suggestion, Board, is if we're comfortable with going forward, we can just go forward without public comment, but it's up to you, so. Is Board okay with this? Because I think, we know what, I mean, I think we've all gotten emails and you can see who's sitting out there in the audience. I mean, Jeff Potter's there, he's probably...
Right in the middle giving a...
We have, I think you're right, Mayor, we have all gotten emails, but at the same time, if they have one person who could represent them, that might be, I understand you're working on a time...
That's all right. I think we know what's going on here. So, the Open Space Committee have agreed to this, right?
I would recommend that just for the record...
Well, I'll ask for, I'll ask for public comment.
Some public comment, thank you.
Anybody want to weigh in? Hear that? Silence? Thank you. All right, motions in order.
Move to deny.
Motion's in order.
I move to authorize the Parks, Recreation and Open Space Department to submit grant application to the Land and Water Conservation Fund and other programs for fee title acquisition of 206 acres south of the Timberline subdivision and Vice Canyon, APN 007-091-66 and 007-293-29 for open space and passive recreation purposes.
There's a motion and a second and a motion discussion. Here we can see none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Oppose, nay. Carrie, go forward and dot the ayes and cross the t's, okay? All right. Let's see now. We're going to go to redevelopment now?
Yeah.
All right. We're going to recess as the Board of Supervisors now and I'm going to turn the gavel over to the Chair of Redevelopment Supervisor Aboud.
Well, Jason, wait just a minute as everyone clears the room that doesn't want to be here I want to call to order this meeting of the Redevelopment Authority and let the record reflect that we have a quorum. Is there any public comment at this point in time? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to move on to item 20A, and I have to start this off with a disclosure, one of many today. NRS 281A.420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from participating when I have a disqualifying conflict. I serve as a board member on the Greenhouse Project Board, a nonprofit organization, along with Lindsay Chichester. The Ethics Commission has opined that where there is a relationship that is substantially similar to that of a substantial and continuing business relationship, there exists a disqualifying conflict. Here, my relationship with Lindsay as co-members on the Greenhouse Project is similar to that of a substantial and continuing business relationship, and therefore, a reasonable person in my situation would be materially affected by this commitment, and as such, I will be abstaining from participating in this matter and turning the gavel over to Lori, who is vice chair.
Oh, more disclosures? Okay, right.
Pursuant to NRS 279.454 and Section 1.4 of the Carson City Redevelopment Authority's Policies and Procedures, I am required to submit a written disclosure to the clerk for the record if I have any direct or indirect financial interest in any property located in the downtown or South Carson Street redevelopment areas. I do have an indirect financial interest in property located in the downtown redevelopment area. I have submitted my written disclosure to the clerk as required, because action on this matter will not benefit me any more or any less than any other in the redevelopment area. I will vote on this matter.
I have one, too.
Further disclosures, Mr. Mayor?
Pursuant to NRS 279.454 and Section 1.4 of the Carson City Redevelopment Authority's Policies and Procedures, I'm required to submit a written disclosure to the clerk for the record if I have any direct or indirect financial interest in property located in either the downtown or South Carson Street redevelopment areas. I have a direct interest in, direct financial interest in property situated on the corner of West Fourth and Thompson, and also situated in the downtown redevelopment area, because this action will not benefit me any more or any less than anyone else in redevelopment area. I will vote on this matter. I also have an interest, a partial interest in a piece of property on 108 West Telegraph.
Ms. Chair, for the record, these last two disclosures are for the next item?
For 20B?
Yes.
Instead of 20A?
Yes, thank you.
We will now take up item 20A, which deals with the potential regarding an expenditure of $5,000 from the Redevelopment Revolving Fund. Mr. Plummel, will you take us through this item, please?
Good morning. Lee Plummel, Community Development Director. This item is for possible action to make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors regarding the expenditure of $5,000 from this current fiscal year, 2018 budget, Redevelopment Revolving Fund Special Event Account for the rental of special event tents and facilities rental for the Carson City Fair at Fuji Park. I do note that this is from special event funds that are available and leftover that were unused within this current budget, while the event is going to be held in July of this year, which is actually the next fiscal year. These expenditures are going to occur in this year for deposits for the tent rental and facilities rental, therefore, by the, if financial rules, they need to come from this budget, so that's the purpose of this request, coming at this time, under this budget. So this isn't part, special events for the fiscal year 19, I'll note again, applications are due April 15th. They go to the Citizens Committee in May and the Board of Supervisors in June, but this is not part of that budget cycle, this request cycle. As I note in the staff report, there was some discussion initially at RAC and even with the Redevelopment Authority here about purchasing tents. After some discussion, further discussion with the Parks and Rec Director and City Manager about this, and I think there needs to be more discussion about policies relating to the management and of those types of assets and the city time and expenditure that goes along with those. So through that, we've gone back to the Citizens Committee, Lindsay Chichester with the Cooperative Extension submitted a special event application to use those funds available for this year's event for the rental of the tents and to offset the cost of the rental of the facility as well, in about the same amount that was going to be allocated for the purchase of the tent. That's probably for a future discussion regarding the management of those assets, but I just wanted to note that that's how this came back around to be a special event request. So Lindsay Chichester is here to answer questions on behalf of the applicant, and I'd be happy to take questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Plummel. Do the board have any questions of either the applicant or Mr. Plummel? Okay, seeing none, then we'll, is there any public comment on this item? Too easy. Okay. I'll bring it back to the board and accept a motion, then.
Don't say that too loud.
I know.
I move to approve and recommend that the Board of Supervisors authorize the expenditure of $5,000 from the fiscal year 2018 Redevelopment Revolving Fund Special Event Account for the rental of special event tents and facilities rental for the Carson City Fair at Fuji Park as an expense incidental to carrying out the redevelopment plan that has been adopted by the Carson City Board of Supervisors, and based upon the findings that there is a causal connection between this redevelopment effort and the need for the expenses, the expenses are needed to ensure the success of the redevelopment plan, and that the amount of the expenses to be given are minor in comparison to the money required for the overall development plan.
There's a motion, a sec, oh, you got it, I'm sorry.
I just said it was too easy. There we go. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
One abstention.
And one abstention. Thank you very much, and...
One more, I think. Are we done?
I can pass the gavel back, though, to the chair. Lori, for taking over.
Adriana, do the disclosures go for this item, too?
They actually only go for this item if you want to repeat that...
If you want a what?
If you would like to repeat your disclosure, you can do that at this time, or I did put on the record that those disclosures are for this particular item.
Okay.
And I do have a disclosure, a written disclosure. Pursuant to NRS 279.454 and Section 1.4 of the Carson City Redevelopment Authority's Policies and Procedures, I'm required to submit a written disclosure to the clerk for the record if I have any direct or indirect financial interest in property located in the downtown or South Carson Street redevelopment areas. I have a direct financial interest in the business known as Cafe at Adele's located in the downtown redevelopment area. As a matter, does not benefit me any more or any less than any other business in the redevelopment area. I will vote on this matter, and I'll submit this to the clerk. Thank you. Any disclosures?
Mayor and Supervisor Bonkowski, you don't have to do it, that's an ethics rule, is the one that you have to do it right at that item. This disclosure that you are doing is under a separate NRS and under your policy for the redevelopment, so you don't have to repeat it again, unless you want to.
All right. Thank you. We've been keeping Adriana busy. All right, so Lee, are you going to take us through this issue?
Sure. Good morning, again, Lee Plummel, Community Development Director. So this item relates to budget planning for the next fiscal year and future years beyond that, so I think that that's the need for the disclosures in this case as a quote-unquote "plan," redevelopment plan, so you are identifying future expenditures. We've been doing this annually. There's a lot of funds that are allocated through the budget and already budget, already committed. The purpose of this item is to go through a process whereby we go to the redevelopment Citizens Committee to get recommendations for funding for the next year and future years and bring it here for certain discretionary funds that are remaining. So we've gone through that process with the Redevelopment Authority Citizens Committee. You have their recommendations with some further explanations in the packet. What I have on the board is kind of a summary of all of that. The upper half of that chart being the prior allocation plan that was approved by the Redevelopment Authority last year, and then the lower half being new projects brought up by both the Redevelopment Authority and the RAC, and shown as ranked in priority up there by the Citizens Committee. Just, I'll do, let me go through a quick note on modifications to the upper part and then a little bit more detail on the lower part. So in order to, in order to have more funds available for use in the next year and looking at the programs up there, there's really two changes that the Citizens Committee has recommended. And the first one is reducing the annual facade improvement program funding from $100,000 per year to $50,000 per year. So so far this year, we've had less than $50,000 in facade improvement applications, so we do have the capacity now to reduce that funding and not make any more available for the rest of this year. I don't know of any projects coming in, that question has come up. I haven't had any inquiries or requests, so it's not likely that something would come in now that would actually need to use the funds in this fiscal year. And then going forward, you know, they did mention that if the program picks up again and there's a demand, then we can, you can always look in future years for adding additional funds into that program. And the second one, and this is the second year we've, that you've been allocating certain funding, and that's $20,000, oh, accidentally hit delete while I was playing with this somehow, but allocating $20,000 per year to a utility extension assistance program, again, that's one where, with no projects currently in for that pipeline, they've recommended putting this year's $20,000 into the roll forward to be able to have more funding for next year's projects. So that takes me down to the recommendations and the rankings of the projects. In the lower half there, the first project that, and the top priority, that was fairly unanimous, if not completely unanimous, was the upgrades to the Bob Boldrick Theater, which was, this talks about funding the seat replacement, but there's additional work in there for a total of $6,000. So the recommendation has been to use all the available roll forward funds plus the extra funds to put into the Bob Boldrick Theater for next fiscal year. Been working closely with Jennifer Budge on this, too, and so her budget request tie in, and looking for the funding to complete that is tying in with this, so that would be expected to be completed in this fiscal year, next fiscal year.
Yeah, Jennifer, if you can come up, too. This is the item that I wanted to talk about on the spreadsheet here. This is one of the five projects that was approved under the infrastructure sales tax money, and it was the final, the last priority to be done after all the other projects were done. It's pretty obvious, I think, at this point that there's going to be money left over to do it at that time, so we've had conversations about moving it up and finding other funding. So that's what's happening here, which I support fully, but there is other money, other line items, where money has been set aside for this project, I think in Parks. So can we go over that, and can you tell us what other money has been set aside over the years to do this? Because I think the overall project's about a half a million dollars.
Six hundred.
Six hundred?
Yeah, one hundred thousand, right.
So if we've got 220 here, where's the other money coming from?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Supervisors, Jennifer Budge, Parks and Recreation Director. We're estimating about a $600,000 total project that we would like to pursue. Currently, we have around $197,000 that was set aside prior to my working here in anticipation of trying to put away money for this project. It's more than just removing and replacing the seats. It's removing and replacing the seats, plus the concrete underneath and resurfacing it, very similar to what was just done at the library. We have some lovely carpet that goes around the wall in the theater that is supposed to be to help, from an acoustical standpoint, that is not very aesthetically pleasing or very effective. Also, the acoustics, and I have Eric Clue here, our manager, and he can be more specific if you have questions for him, but the acoustics aren't what we would like them to be as well. So this would be a much larger project than just the seats, and the great thing is, when you remove the seats, we can put in scaffolding, we can do painting, we can do things that we can't do while the seats are in place. So it's sort of a domino effect and a more comprehensive project that we'd like to do. So we do have the $197,000, as we talked about. This funding would be tremendously helpful from redevelopment. I've submitted a request to use quality of life funding for the remainder for next year. We have about $550,000 total to play with in quality of life next year. Obviously, we have millions of dollars in needs, but this is the top of our priority list for next year for quality of life, this and resurfacing the swimming pool. So we would be able to make that $600,000 goal, with hopes of doing this project. Our goal is in December of next fiscal year to have the least impact on our users. We have a couple options Eric's put together, I think, maybe first, second, and third options for not impacting the theater too bad, but it would probably be about a two-month closure, we're estimating. If we have the approval for today, what we'd like to do is move forward and use that $197,000, not all of it, but to hire a design consultant, get that going, and be ready to go to bid after the next fiscal year.
Great, thank you. I have a question for the DA. Will we need to, at some point in the future, change the allocation plan or the plan of expenditure if we complete this item, the sales tax?
For the one...
No, you just don't have to.
I'm not sure about that. That's more for finance.
I can check with Boncousel, but I don't think that we would have to change the plan. I'll make sure.
So really, my question centers on, in the 2019 column, we still have $20,000 for the utility extension, and really, it appears that over the last few years, no one's really taking advantage of that, and we had that originally thinking on some property that was near Grandma Hattie's. Remember, there was some thought that we might need to extend some utilities? And so the question for me is, should we take the 2019 $20,000 and also move it into the Bob Boldrick Theater? I just think there isn't any projects on the horizon, and we're going to be doing South Carson Street, and no businesses have approached us about doing any utility extensions, correct? I just want to make sure that I...
Nobody has approached me recently.
Nobody's approached to piggyback into any construction project or anything going on.
The other site that has come up in the past related to this is the old Copeland Lumber site with utilities going through it and that need to be relocated, but that's possible, but there's nothing, nothing in the works that we have, know of for that property either.
So I think we should discuss moving $20,000 of that in there, too.
Right, I think that one of the conditions under the redevelopment plan for utility help is that it be part of a submitted plan, so it's not something that we're going to be proactive on, and there's nothing out there on those parcels that I see coming up. I'm pretty familiar with those parcels, so...
John, do you have a question?
No, but thanks for everybody else doing the heavy lifting. I just have something to say, and that is, this was one of the absolute priorities in the years that I've lived here to see happen. I'm so happy with the epic rides in our trails. I'm happy with bringing on Mark Salinas as our culture guy, and this, to me, is a capstone. This is a cherry going on the chocolate sundae. This is a great facility we're sitting in right now, and that theater has more potential, so I hope, I just suggest that you look at ways that we can use it that would be new once you're completed, because that is a great facility and can be used for, like, the WNC productions already are here and et cetera, so that we can get things going in this town. I've had people talk to me about, what do we have for young people, and we can do more things for young people as well in this place, and we've done them all along, but we can upgrade that, so thank you. Thank you, everybody.
And I'd just like to comment, I, too, would like to see the $20,000 from the utility extension assistance put into the Bob Boldrick Theater, and just as a very creative approach was taken to the library renovation, I'd like to see that same sort of thought process extended to the theater as we move forward, to take it into the next few years. Is there any other board comment on this?
Just a comment, I don't, well, we've got Parks here. You know, what are we doing with the restrooms at the pool? You know, what are, what are we doing with the restrooms at the pool?
You had to bring that up.
Yeah. I mean, I get talked about every time I, I mean, there's a, there's a core group of people who use that pool who ask me about those restrooms continually.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The city manager said he was going to go swim with them in the morning, and of course, he's, as Marines would do, he kind of took a powder. Let the Navy handle it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Jennifer Budge, Parks and Recreation Director. The aquatic facility is a real challenge. It's, it's aging and it requires a lot of capital reinvestment. I have to be honest with that. My goal was to try to invest $100,000 annually into the facility and start baby steps in doing that. Last year, you were very supportive of, of that vision. We do have $100,000 right now to go toward either the men's or the women's restroom. We're working with Western Nevada Supply and Facilities and trying to get the most out of that money that we can. That's just a drop in the bucket. Looking forward to next year, resurfacing the swimming pool is frankly a higher priority. If we don't resurface and replaster that pool that was, is more than 10 years overdue as a capital improvement, we could lose the entire facility. We don't want that to happen, and I'm not trying to be dramatic, but that's just the state of where we're at. So that is our priority for next year. We won't really have the funds to allocate toward the restrooms in next year's budget, unfortunately.
I would suggest you start with the women's bathroom, because they care more.
We do hear from them more often, I will say that.
Men don't care about dirt.
Any other board comment? Any public comment at this point in time on this issue? Seeing none, Lee?
Just wanted to continue, so staying on, staying on the Bob Boldrick Theater for a minute then, it sounds like we have consensus that that's the one project that we want to put funds into, so you might want to, I, I've made that on the spreadsheet that I'll give to Kathy. You also might want to mention that any other, any other unused funds that are, that roll forward from this year would be put towards that project, and I think that's kind of the consensus that I'm hearing what we would do as well, so. And in fact, since, and that's as finance does the numbers and finds things, there was a little bit more available than they thought even when it was at RAC. So we'll, we'll continue to adjust that number based on actual funds that can be rolled forward. Just continuing on real quick, real quick, the portable event sound system was ranked second by RAC. There's actually funds available this year in that second line item at the top under special event equipment, so I would just recommend that we just fund that out of this year's budget, so it doesn't affect anything else. And just going down the list, Children's Museum Playground, that's something that is on, I forget which, Ann Street, I think that is, and, and South Carson Street, the museum. So in past discussions, there was some talk about doing more of a plaza on Ann Street on half of it, but they've changed their plans and scaled back to do something outside and more in the front and around the, on the corner there where that facility is. The presentation that they gave to RAC is, is in your packet, you've seen it. Somebody from the Children's Museum is here if you have any specific questions on that. That's one.
Lee, I do. Is that a universally accessible playground that's being proposed?
Well, I don't know that, that, they haven't given the details to get to that far to where the, to even get a really detailed cost estimate, but I think that universally accessible is probably something that they should keep in mind, and I think with the nods of heads, you know, as they go, go into this design, that it'd be something universally accessible. And so now I'm kind of getting to the projects going down the list here that are not going to be funded next year, that would be tentatively budgeted in future budgets. Fuji Park Fairgrounds Arena Sound System, that's something else that if you have questions from Eric, he's very familiar with, that's, that right now, as my understanding is, it breaks down frequently, takes cost for maintenance, so.
Let's, let's back up just one, because we have a representative from the, from the Children's Museum, so.
Hi, I'm Casey Gillis, and our director couldn't be here today, Beth Ellis, but I am the president of the board at this point, so if you had questions, I wanted to be able to answer them. We really, you know, it's almost a misnomer when you say playground. We're really looking at an open play area with very natural things. We're not trying to compete with McDonald's or city parks. We, in fact, as we go forward, even if we do not get the grant money for all the accessories we want, in looking at the front of that now, as we look closely with the architect and we have met with his, hope from the historical, we have met with city people, we have a meeting coming up with fire safety and building safety because we're changing egress. If nothing else, we want to go forward and take the front of the building. It, there's cement that's buckled, there is old artsy things that are ready to fall down on kids. It's an accident ready to, you know, happen, so we at least want to go forward. We want to keep it natural, we want to keep it in so that it matches what's been done on the, the main street, on Carson Street. We don't even want grass, we're going to put other things. So at this point, before we go forward though, we're making sure that we're not going to find any stumbling blocks where the historical commission says, it's an old building, you can't do what you think you want to do. We want to make sure that everybody along the way is willing to say yes, and then we'll go forward.
Thank you for that. So it's really a work in progress at this point in time.
It came to us totally unexpected, so it's just the beginning of it, yes.
So going forward then to the Fuji Park Arena Sound System, I can tell you that in the years that I've sat on this board, at least twice, the Fuji Park master plan has come in front of us and we've gotten nowhere on it. We've talked about monument science, we've talked about adding lighting, tens of thousands of dollars worth of lighting, we've talked about a lot of stuff, and we've made no progress at all. And I can tell you, I am not going to be willing to approve any money to be spent on Fuji Park until we solve that problem. We need to address the master plan, we need to know what we're going to do with the park. What is the total design? What are, what do we want it to be when it grows up? I don't want to spend $100,000 on a sound system and then the next year come back and look at spending $50,000 on lights over here, and then look at, you know, spending money over on the parking area over here and bringing electrical service over here. I want to see the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Could I get on, in on that? I just want to add the protest of lots of people I have met over the last few years regarding that dog park. If we better, we got to include the whole thing as a master plan look, because that dog park just doesn't get used.
One other question. Casey, I understand, I talked to the, I happen to be talking to the Kiwanis folks, and I think they're going to, they're probably going to ink in and help you on this.
Yes, Beth talked to a couple of gentlemen who would be very happy, because again, once we start, we do want natural items, and they're willing to help us construct and do, but we have some ideas, but again, till, we aren't attaching anything to the building, we're basically taking a lot away and then seeing what we can do, but yes, we're very appreciative of that. But whatever we do, we are going to have to have grant money above and beyond this because our budget is a shoestring budget and there's no money, you know. So we'll have to have a plan and then approach the, on grants and approach the public with fundraising, but we're anxious to do it. The idea that somebody could drive down Carson Street and see families out in front and children playing and go, oh, you know, that's what that old building is for, instead of trying to read the signs. And in keeping with all the redevelopment, the downtown looks so nice, we really want to, you know, contribute to that too. It just seems like a natural time to do it.
All right, any other board comment on this? Lee, anything else for us?
Just to wrap it up real quick then, just going down the list there, there were some other, including the downtown arches, which the downtown 2020 group went and got some cost estimates, so you see that's a very high-ticket item, and, and other programs that fell down the list, and, and the Citizens Committee chose not to necessarily allocate funding at this time for any of the, for any of the further projects. And again, this would be, if, if, should you accept the recommendation as, as it is there with the amendment to the, that you've talked about already that I've included in the spreadsheet, so we would make those changes in the 20, in the draft 2019 budget for you. And we'd bring this back again next year to you at this same time for discussion on 2020 and beyond as to what actually gets funded in the budget. We, so we have that time to work on, to talk about more of a comprehensive plan as we talk about Fuji Park and things, so we'd bring it back through this process next year. So that's it, and, that's it.
Thank you, Lee. Any further board comment? Any public comment? All right, I'll bring it back to the board. Motion. I move to accept the redevelopment discretionary funds allocation plan for fiscal year 19 and estimating future allocations for the following four years for budget planning purposes as updated today with the $20,000 change from utility extension to Bob Boldrick, and if the final fiscal year 18, undesignated funds would also be rolled into the Bob Boldrick Lee, please tell the redevelopment RAC committee what a great job they're doing and how much we appreciate their work. Twenty-one, public comment? Seeing none, then we'll adjourn as the redevelopment authority, and I'll hand the gavel back to the mayor.
We're going to call the meeting of the Board of Supervisors back to order. We're on item number 24, the 24 Alpha, this is a companion matter to 20 Bravo that we just heard.
Bob, I need to disclose again?
I'll get it for you, hang on.
Okay.
I'll get it, I'll get it for you. It's actually 20, 20 Alpha, 20 Alpha, so we will incorporate by reference all the testimony and exhibits and other items with respect to what we heard on 20A, including disclosures, all disclosures. That includes the one from Supervisor Abell.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so with that in mind, we'll, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
Resolution number? I move to adopt resolution 2018R4 authorizing the expenditure of $5,000 from the fiscal year 2018 redevelopment revolving funds, special events account for the rental of special event tents and facility rentals for the Carson City Fair at Fuji Park as an expense incidental to the carrying out of the redevelopment plan that has been adopted by the Carson City Board of Supervisors, and based upon the findings that there is a causal connection between this redevelopment effort and the need for the expenses. The expenses are needed to ensure the success of the redevelopment plan, and that the amount of the expenses to be given are minor in comparison to the money required for the overall redevelopment plan.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried, okay.
And one abstention.
And one abstention, I'm sorry. Supervisor Abell abstained. All right, let's take up item 24 Bravo. If any board member wants to take a break, just kind of pass a note over, and we'll do that. It'd be my intention to see if we can just go straight through.
And I have a disclosure.
Yeah, we've got disclosures coming up here.
Ladies first.
Ladies first, okay. Go.
All right. NRS 281A, point 420, requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from participating when I have a disqualifying conflict. The parking lot property abandonment, if approved, will benefit the adjacent property owners, one of which is 308 North Curry Hop and Me Adams Foundation. I am currently under contract with Hop and Me Adams Foundation to do design work on the 308 North Curry Building. Therefore, because I have a substantial and continuing business relationship with one of the entities that will benefit from this abandonment, a reasonable person in my position would be materially affected, and therefore, I will not participate and will abstain from voting on this matter.
NRS 281A, point 420, requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from participating when I have a disqualifying conflict. The Nevada Commission on Ethics has opined that where a substantial and continuing business relationship exists, there is a disqualifying conflict. In my private capacity, I am in a, I am a partner in the real estate brokerage firm, NAI Alliance Carson City. Bruce Robertson, a broker in my firm, has a listing that may stand to benefit from this item, agenda item. Therefore, because a business relationship exists and because of the effect my vote may have on that relationship, a reasonable person in my position would be conflicted, so I will abstain from participating on this matter.
Okay, so we've got three of us. All right, goodbye. I'm kidding you. All right. All right, Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. The subject request is for a abandonment of a portion of Proctor Street located between North Nevada Street and North Curry Street. I have a map up on the screen to show that area. The Board of Supervisors is authorized to abandon a right-of-way. The Planning Commission makes recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. At its meeting of February 28, 2018, the Planning Commission reviewed the subject request against the seven required findings and voted 7-0 to recommend approval of the abandonment. Of note, during the Planning Commission's review, the topic of public parking came up. The adjacent property owner, Steve Neighbors, described a willingness to accommodate public or customer parking. I have a photograph of the sign, and I'll have a second photograph. The subject area actually functions more like a parking lot than a road. You'll see an apron from the adjacent roadway to the portion of Proctor Street being considered for abandonment. Currently, the order of abandonment is silent on the provision of public parking. If the Board of Supervisors believes that provision for public parking is necessary to make the seven required findings, particularly the finding related to public benefit and the finding related to the parking value analysis, it may want to consider a condition, I'm going to put that condition I'm proposing for your consideration on the board, which states, as the abandonment of the right-of-way will result in the loss of 18 public parking spaces, the owners of the subject property shall provide a minimum of 18 parking spaces to the public. It is understood that those spaces will be made available to the public, the, I'm sorry, let me take another stab at that. It may be, it is understood that those spaces made available to the public may be limited to two-hour parking between the hours of 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM weekdays. This condition shall run with the land, meaning as land is redeveloped in the future, 18 public parking spaces shall be required as part of the redevelopment. A disclosure stating this shall be recorded with the Carson City Recorder's Office. Failure to comply with this condition could result in revocation of this abandonment. So that's for consideration by the, by the board, should you feel this is necessary to meet the required findings. I will also point out that Exhibit C, under Condition 3, there is a typo, so that condition should read and will read at the time of recordation. A blanket public utility easement for all portions of Proctor Street being abandoned will be provided. That is consistent with all the other documents that are part of the order of abandonment. So I would ask that the Board of Supervisors, in your motion, please note that Exhibit C is to be corrected as stated on the record. I'm happy to answer questions. Stephanie Hicks, the Real Property Manager for the city, who's the applicant in this case, is present, as is Steve Neighbors, who is the adjacent property owner. Thank you, Mayor.
So Stephanie, who ends up owning the property?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Stephanie Hicks, Real Property Manager. The property would revert to the adjacent property owners, which in this case is the May and Hop Adams Foundation.
And there are 18 parking places now, and under what the Planning Commission said is, keep 18?
Correct, there's 18 spaces currently. And I would note that during construction of the development project that is adjacent, actually, half of those spaces haven't been utilized recently because of the construction. And I went over there before the Planning Commission meeting, and everything seemed to be functioning well, there was sufficient parking in the area, and that was at a four o'clock time when I did, you know, I didn't go over there more than that. But those spaces haven't been available for a period of time because of the development. Once that is completed, they will be available again.
Okay. Mr. Neighbors, you want to weigh in?
Yeah, so I think we bought the parking lot that the city was leasing, I want to say two and a half years ago, so now we own both sides of that street. We've been allowing general public parking there, but we've asked the state agency that's using the parking lot and a number of other. using the parking lot and a number of other business owners to have their employees and themselves park at another parking lot we own, free, to leave that parking lot open for customers. It's my intent at this point in time to go ahead and mark the entire parking lot, not all 78, because I'm in, I'm working with the church that also has some, to mark all parking stalls, customers only, two hours maximum. I've offered free parking two and a half blocks away from a state agency behind the annex, and I plan on turning the Arlington Square, or the Ice Skating Rink, or the Robinson-Curry Parking Lot, as it's known, into private parking to be used also by employees and owners of businesses down there. And my thought is that as long as I have these resources to help with downtown parking, I would do so. My concern is that if I do go ahead and mark all those parking lots and all those stalls as two-hour free customers, that somehow there will be a sense of entitlement, that that land becomes the city's or becomes other business owners. And I've experienced that in the past. I've provided free parking in all the blocks. Well, for the last 11 years, all the parking lots around the Nugget have been under my control, and I've allowed free parking, and I've been amazed at how many people think that parking lot then becomes theirs. We had some problems when we allowed the ice skating rink coming in, that neighboring businesses felt like I was taking away their parking, or I was blocking their view. There's been a belief that anything we do requires us to build a parking garage for the public, and so I just want to go on record that I'm willing to try this two-hour parking for everybody, and for customers only, but I really need the other business owners to help me keep parking available for downtown customers. If you go there at 8:00 in the morning, you'll see the entire parking lot full. You'll see it full of employees and state agency people. We've owned that for two and a half years. I've gone and visited with them, and I've offered the free parking two and a half blocks away, so that customers downtown, especially during construction, wouldn't be an issue. And I've yet to have anybody really take me up on that. And so that was my thought, is if I could mark the whole parking lot, not only that which is part of the abandonment, but all of the parking lot of both mine and the church's two hour, we could probably start forcing those employees to park, you know, where we're allowing them to park. But again, I don't want to, I don't want to assume responsibility for everybody's parking. It's the same thing with the garbage. I've allowed people to use our garbage stuff, and all of a sudden it becomes an entitlement, and then all of a sudden I own the garbage problem for all the community. And I'm just, I want to be careful of that.
John, Supervisor Barrett.
Well, right now, we're talking about these 18 parking spots. You, did I hear Hope correctly, you're willing to have it be two hours, but be public? That's what you?
Yeah, so I'm willing to mark all 78, including the 18.
I heard, yeah, I just, on this one. My only concern is that, and I assume that you'll own it in perpetuity, but it could change hands, so I think we need to be clear where we're going here, if it ever did change hands, that's all. So getting your thoughts on this, with the two-hour parking, it works for you in those 18, right?
Yes, I just don't want people to think that it's their property. That's my concern.
And also, as I understand it, this would be a covenant running with the land, so I mean, this is permanently, whether you own it or anybody else owns it, at least under that language, whoever owns it's going to be limited, the property's going to be encumbered by that statement.
So I guess has, I have a fiduciary duty to the foundation. The opinion I've got is that the easement is for roadway, and the roadway has been abandoned, it's been abandoned some time. So any payment, or any fee, or any demand by the city to do the abandonment really is inappropriate. And it just happens to be that we, the present owner, believe that we should extend all of our efforts to assist the city. But I am concerned about kind of overstepping on the easement. So that's something I want you guys to be aware of. We, the foundation, want to help downtown be a vital part of this community. I think we've shown ourselves to be a good community member, but I guess I'm conflicted a little bit with my duty to watch out for the foundation today.
Well, I think, one, it's a good deal to donate additional parking places, and I understand what's going on there. I think, you know, if the board sees fit to go down this road, that, you know, the city ought to make, the city, I don't know who'd be in charge of the enforcement of that, but I think the city could do some things that would alert the public that, you know, these are two-hour, these are for customers only. I don't, so.
So Mayor, I've already engaged a contract to mark all 78 stalls, two hours maximum, customers only. So the entire parking lot will be signed that way.
All right.
And I want to, and I hope this works, and I hope all the, I hope the state agency that, and the various other employees do take me up on the free offer that is a two-and-a-half block walk.
But the mayor's raised a good question here, who enforces?
It's private property, but...
So I guess, I guess ultimately, it'd be my enforcement, but I have talked with the city manager, and I'm open to, you know, working out some kind of arrangement. That's...
So I guess I have a different general question. When you record this, it will run with the land, so it says may be limited to a two-hour parking. So I want to make sure on the interpretation of that, that we're all clear. So could he then decide, him or the next owner, that I'm going to just open it up to pure public parking? Would this allow it? It's not mandatory that it's, I'm trying to get why we're even going to record this if the language is may. So what real flexibility are we building in? I'm trying to understand this.
The first sentence is a mandatory.
In looking at the findings, and again, when you consider a right-of-way abandonment, you're going to your findings. The Board of Supervisors has adopted seven findings. Two of those findings I want to point out is, one is regarding the public benefit and the offset against a determination of reasonable consideration, and the second is a parking value analysis. So anytime you consider a right-of-way abandonment, you're considering what is the impact to the, is there a public benefit, or we're losing a public benefit? And what is the impact on parking? I had some folks count the parking spaces, and they said there's 18 public parking spaces there today. So that's, that's what's there if you go and count. So I'm letting the board know there are 18 parking spaces. If, based on these two findings, you feel it's in the public interest to retain 18 public spaces, this condition does that. In terms of the limitation to two-hour parking, that's putting everyone on notice, including the board. You could certainly strike that, that this isn't just a blanket, anyone who works downtown gets to come and park for two, for the whole day, that we could limit that to two hours. So it's just to create flexibility and to have transparency.
My question is a little, it's different, maybe I didn't make it clear. Under this condition, could Mr. Neighbors allow those 18 public parking spaces? Because the first condition is he has to give us 18 public parking spaces. I'm concerned in the language of the next sentence, it says that he may be limited to two hours. So he could make it an all-day if he wanted.
Or he could make it one hour.
Correct. But he could not do a one hour. He could just make it all, he can't do less than two hours. That's what I'm trying to get to.
No, I specifically use the word "may" to simply have transparency that reflected his testimony at the Planning Commission, but did not lock anyone into a timeframe.
So he could change it to 15-minute parking for the public parking space?
As this is written, yes.
Well, okay, then I, again, I just questioned why we're putting that sentence in there. I just don't like to do conditions that are really, don't have any meaning. So I like the first, and we can discuss that, I like the first part that says you're going to provide us the 18 public parking places. I'm just trying to understand the limitations, since there isn't really any. That's my point.
I think I see where they're going, I think I see where both here are happening here. I think, you know, the one is it's going to be 18 parking places for public use, period. Okay, that's, that's the first step. Then the next thing is, okay, that, I get, now I get, because I thought really when you said "may" on the second one, that you would lock in that you could make any time that you wanted. But I'm not so certain that that's not the appropriate language right now, given the language of the first sentence that says it's locked in, that these are public parking places. And all they're saying on that second sentence is they may be limited to two-hour public parking. That's, I think, is what's going on here.
Is, I guess I'm, I think Ms. Bagwell has brought up a good question. If I come back and think, well, no, one hour works better, am I limited that I couldn't do that?
Well, you would, you...
You should say that there, it may have time limits. It may, time limits may be applicable.
I like that better.
I think that's what it's trying to say there.
I like that better, Lee, that he, the subject property could have time limits, but we're not in this condition saying it's two hours, one hour, 15 minutes. It's that they have the right to condition the time of the public parking. He could put a sign up that says a space is limited to whatever.
That's fair.
So I just want to be clear and always make sure we all know what we're, what agreement we're entering into.
I appreciate that. And then my other assumption is that I now assume responsibility for all the maintenance on that property.
That's a good assumption. All right, so...
So it would say maybe, maybe limited to parking times.
For the benefit of the record, I think the second sentence, what I've heard you say is it is understood that those spaces may be subject to time limits. And then the next sentence would start, this condition shall...
I'm much more comfortable with that. Thank you.
I still raise a question of enforcement.
Maybe I can, maybe I can answer that. And it's my understanding that in the negotiations, the enforcement, because it is a private property, would fall on the private owner, as well as maintenance.
And that's my understanding as well.
Mr. Neighbors, are you comfortable with the proposed condition change on the time?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you.
Read that again. Thank you. Hope?
Hope, read the whole.
Read the second sentence, again, please.
For the benefit of the record, the proposed condition would stay as the abandonment of the right-of-way will result in a loss of 18 parking spaces. The owner of the subject property shall provide a minimum of 18 parking spaces to the public. It is understood that those spaces may be subject to time limits.
That's the one, time, what does that, what does that mean?
It means if the owner...
It should say parking time limits, or something like that.
Okay, subject to parking time limits. Okay.
Is the language clear that we're talking about the same 18 parking spaces?
That's the only thing we're talking about. So the second sentence could say it is understood those spaces may be sub, I'm sorry, is understood those spaces may be subject to parking time limits. This condition shall run with the land, meaning as land is redeveloped in the future, 18 public parking spaces shall still be required as part of redevelopment. A disclosure stating this shall be recorded with the Carson City Recorders Office. Failure to comply with this condition could result in revocation of this abandonment.
Revocation, not relocation.
Relocation. Revocation, okay.
All right. We okay with that, Board? It's a good call, good call. All right. Public comment? Anybody want to weigh in on this one? Anybody? I don't see any Board.
Does that satisfy you, Mr. Neighbors?
Yes, I think the only other thing that I'm asking for is that I'm not, just because I'm extending all 78 to be this way, and I'm extending some free parking, that I'm not embracing a responsibility for parking forever. Does that make sense?
Except on the 18.
Except on the 18.
Okay. All right. We'll take a motion.
Okay. I move to approve an order of abandonment of the Proctor Street right-of-way approximately 11,220 square feet, I don't know why more or less is needed, if approximately is there, but located between North Nevada Street and North Curry Street, adjacent to the properties located at 234 North Curry Street and 308 North Curry Street, adjacent to Assessor's parcel number 003-212-01 and 003-228-01. Based on the findings, subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report, additionally, a correction on Exhibit C, as stated on the record today, and adding a condition, as stated on the record today, on the 18 public parking spaces, and authorize the mayor to sign the order of abandonment.
There's a motion, a second on the motion discussion. Hearing on seeing none, the three of us all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and then two abstentions. Supervisor Bagwell and Supervisor, Supervisor Abell and Supervisor Brunkowski abstain. Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Steve. Make sure you take care of the churches too, Steve. Okay. All right. All right, let's take up the next abandonment issue. This is 24 Charlie. This is to consider adoption of an order of abandonment of the Aspen Street right-of-way approximately 34,121 square feet, more or less, located between Arthur Street and Clear Creek Avenue, adjacent to properties located at 151 Arthur Street, 153 Arthur Street, 159 Arthur, 169 Clear Creek Avenue, 230 Clear Creek Avenue, 5431 Aspen Street, adjacent to a parcel, Assessor's parcel number 009-224-0304-11, 009-226-0509, and 10. Okay, I know I read that whole thing, so you don't have to read the whole thing in there again. Tell us what we're doing here and show us what's happening here.
Okay, I have on the screen a picture of the area to be abandoned. The Board of Supervisors has the authority to abandon a right-of-way. This is a dirt road with a slope differential. There's actually concrete barriers in the road that stop the functionality of this roadway. On January 17, 2018, the city's real property manager sent a letter to each property owner advising that should this right-of-way be abandoned, the portion of right-of-way would revert to their property, and they would be responsible for maintenance and taxes. We did identify scribbler's error, and the resulting parcel description for APN 009-226-05 and a correct description will be included in the recorded document.
What do you call that, a scribner's error or scribbler's error?
Maybe I called the wrong thing.
It's a scribner's error, right?
It's what you said.
I thought you said a scribbler's error, and I thought, okay.
I called it that.
That's all right.
Okay.
Scribner, that's good, all right.
I'm really stumbling today. We'll keep going. At its meeting in February 28, 2018, the Planning Commission reviewed the subject request against the seven required findings and voted 7-0 to recommend approval of the abandonment. I'm happy to answer questions. The city's real property manager, Stephanie Hicks, is the applicant, and she's present.
Supervisor Brunkowski.
Here we go. First, I'll say that I support this abandonment. If you turn to page 299 in our packet, which is Exhibit A for the private access easement, I have several questions on the, on the private access easement. First, there's no language in here that says whether or not the private access easement would be exclusive or non-exclusive. So I think we need to decide if we want to include that language. It also does not designate who the grantee and grantor are. And then it... And then it does not, it doesn't reference anything about, nor, I'm guessing, have we talked to the residents over there about a maintenance agreement for the maintenance of the road. And again, for those looking on the TV at home, this is to get to those two interior parcels from the two north parcels. There'd be a 30-foot access easement driveway to provide access to those two middle properties. And so I just want to make sure that we've covered our bases on this particular document. Everything else looked okay to me, and I ran this by a title company to ask them, from a legal perspective, would they have an issue with this? And they said that, as it's written, we could probably get away with it, but it could be more clear. So I'm just opening this up for discussion and like to hear what your thoughts are on those issues.
Thank you. Stephanie Hicks, real property manager, for the record. So while Hope indicated we sent out a letter in January to the property owners, we've actually been working on this with them for quite some time. I met with them probably over a year ago, if not a year and a half, and we came up with the discussion about that access easement. So it is for the benefit, obviously, of the two interior lots, so that they have the right and authority to cross over the property, those two properties there to the north. It is an understanding that it is a private access easement, so those two property owners that are, that will be utilizing that for access would be responsible for all improvements and maintenance. The city didn't want to get involved in that. We wanted it to be their own private discussions.
Put on the record which parcel numbers those would be.
The parcels will, that will access through the private access easement are 009-224-04 and 009-226-10. And you may know, if you're familiar with the location and the site, there's actually an existing improved driveway that accesses 009-224-04 that goes through 009-224-03. Those are, those parcels are owned by family members, and so they are allowing that access today. But the reason that we actually selected the location in the center of the existing right-of-way is so that in the future, if those are different property owners, that would be the more, in their opinion, the more beneficial approach.
So they have discussed maintenance?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And you're satisfied that the word "private" rather than "exclusive" is okay?
I'm, I'm open to your recommendation if you think it would make it more solid if we said "exclusive."
My preference would be to use "exclusive" rather than "private," because "private" doesn't really mean anything. It doesn't designate the parties. And then my last question was, do you think that it would be best to designate the grantee and grantor on this? The title company said that the city has the right to go in and create this easement before we do the abandonment, and it's a valid easement, but I'm always in favor of maximum clarity. So again, I'm just putting it out there for discussion, because it doesn't say in here that it's to the benefit of the interior. It's implied, but it's not stated.
Would that just need to be through the order of the abandonment, or would that, would you recommend that be a separate action?
I think it just needs, the language needs to be in the easement document here. I don't think it needs to be in the abandonment.
We would be glad to modify it as such.
Okay, great, thank you.
So that would be a modification to Exhibit, Exhibit A, that would say it's an exclusive easement, and then in favor of?
In favor of APN, in favor of the two interior APNs.
Okay, is that good enough for you?
Yes.
All right. Understand what we just said?
That's fine with us as well.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Any other questions either? Public comment here? Public comment? Anybody want to weigh in? Anybody? Everybody's okay with what we're doing here?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to recommend that if we modify Exhibit A, we modify Exhibit C, Condition 4, Page 327, to just reflect those changes as well, so we have consistency within the document.
Okay. All right. Anything else? All right, let's take a motion with that. And Supervisor Brinkowski, you want to try a motion, then add that language, and make sure that it's made, that we incorporate compatible language throughout the document to make sure that we've been consistent.
I move to approve an order of abandonment of the Aspen Street right-of-way approximately 34,121 square feet, more or less, located between Arthur Street and Clear Creek Avenue, adjacent to properties located at 151 Arthur Street, 153 Arthur Street, 159 Arthur Street, 160 Clear Creek Avenue, 230 Clear Creek Avenue, and 5431 Aspen Street, adjacent to Assessor's parcel numbers 009-224-03, 04, and 011, and 009-226-05, 09, and 10. Based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report, including amending Exhibit A with the comments that were read into the record, and ensuring a review of the entire document to make sure that all language throughout the document will comply with the changes made to Exhibit A, and to authorize the mayor to sign the order of abandonment.
Second.
There's a motion, a second on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, nay, carried. Good discussion, folks. All right. Thank you, Ms. Hicks. And Hope Sullivan, I got to tell you, somebody else talked to me. I mean, I caught you going across the street and told you, I'm getting all kinds of comments about you, good ones, you know? So maybe you're doing something, you know, because you've got, you live in a hard, you live in a hard world over there, but you're doing something right, so keep up your good customer service attitude.
Bless you, too.
All right, let's take up the last item for the morning here. Board of Supervisors on action items. Anybody got anything?
I just would like to thank the city manager and Darren Schultz from Public Works. Last week, in the area that I hike, which is near the property we talked about earlier today, there was an illegal dumping of two washing machines, and they were right on it and got it properly cleaned up, so I appreciate that very much.
Oh, it doesn't matter to me. I just wanted to say what everybody read in the paper the other day, the airport authorities hired a new manager, Ken Moen, from up in Reno area, and he's quite impressive. I hope you all take a chance when you get one to meet him and get to know him, and I'd like him sooner or later to sit down with our city manager and see what can be done long-term, because it's a good airport, but we have a lot of work to do. So you know all about that, I'm sure.
And I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Lori and the mayor for going back to Washington and lobbying for approval of the Tiger Grant that we were just awarded this last week. I wanted to thank our congressional delegates, who also gave us letters of support, and public work staff especially, they did a lot of work to make sure that we got that so that we can now connect our complete streets, South Carson project, with our downtown project, and have complete streets now from basically William Street all the way down to the south terminus of the city. So good job to everybody.
I think it was the fact that I got a 93 on the bowling.
Oh, I thought it was on the Rorschach test.
The Rorschach. A 93, man, I tell you. Anyway, let me just say a couple of things. Next, the 29th of March is the anniversary of the, I think it's the 53rd anniversary of the cessation of hostilities in the Vietnam War. I think we might be doing something that day in front of City Hall. We'll see what we get. We're looking to get a flag and get some folks out there.
So we're attempting to get the flag, Mr. Mayor, and we're also going to reach out to all the veterans who work for the city, and if you're available, we'll do one big group photo.
And we ought to get the board. We could make a good...
And the board members, and we'll do a group photo out in front of City Hall.
And then there'll be another formal ceremony of welcome-home ceremony. We don't know the time yet on that one, but we're having a little bit of difficulty finding the flag, but we've got some leads on it. Saturday afternoon at 5:00 at Mills Park, there'll be a formal welcome-home ceremony. And then May, or June 1, there'll be, at 10:00 in the morning, there'll be a ceremony to kick off the traveling wall, Vietnam Memorial Wall in Mindon in Gardinerville, if you need to. I can't remember the exact location of that, but it's 10:00 on June 1. So all those, all those things are happening here. All right. Anything else? Let me, let me just say, you know, on Tiger Grant, you know, you have read what I put in the paper, this board works well together, and we work well with the RTC, and we work well with our staff, and so, you know, I think my compliment goes to all of you folks for dealing with all of these people, and I know, you know, it was just well done for all of you. So take that one and understand that, you know, these are indeed team efforts. And I like to think that Lori and I made some good things there, but...
We didn't hurt us.
We didn't hurt it, you know? But at the end of the day, it really is a team approach, and it speaks well of how well this community works together. So, all right. Anything else? All right, can we recess until 1:30? Is that all right with everybody? All right. Without objection, we'll recess until 1:30.